Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 1st special meeting of the Berkeley School Board. If you want to follow along on our online agenda, the agenda is posted on the district's website. We recognize this meeting was posted and properly noticed, but for my colleagues, we didn't vote pursuant to our bylaws, and we'll acknowledge that in the future. I'm now calling this meeting to order at 7:41 PM. Ms. Chides, please call the official role for this evening's meeting.
Student Director Kate Lao.
Present.
Director Jennifer Shonowski.
Here.
Director Laura Babbitt.
Here.
Director Mike Chang.
Yes.
Vice President Kadija Brown.
Present.
Presidenta Navasudev.
Presente.
Great, thank you, Ms. Chides. We will now approve the agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any requested changes, colleagues? Seeing no changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve.
Is there a second? I'll second. Directors, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. President Navasudev, who seconded? I did. Oh. Noted. And we'll now report out from our closed session. Vice President Brown, please report out from the closed session.
Good evening, everyone. This evening's closed session began at 5:35 PM. All of the board directors are present for closed session. For item 3.1, the board heard an update and gave direction. And for item 3.2, the board heard an update and provided direction. This ends the reading of the notes from closed session. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Vice President Brown. And now we will hear from our superintendent, Anika Ford Mortho.
Good evening, BUSD family. Y'all getting better at that, thank you. So I want to say, welcome to May BUSD. Today, we kick off two important Heritage Months. Two important Heritage Month celebrations, actually, that further highlight how richly diverse and unique Berkeley Unified is. I'm loud today. For the third year in a row, BUSD is celebrating Jewish American Heritage Month, another opportunity to collectively honor the traditions, experiences, contributions, and beautiful diversity of the Jewish community. Today, go ahead. Today, our staff and families received resources for celebrating Jewish American heritage, resources that affirm Jewish identities and promote cultural awareness. This month is also an opportunity to continue to denounce antisemitism in all of its form, and we as a community continue to stand against all forms of hate. We are excited to announce that on Sunday, May 19th, we are inviting you, all of you, to BUSD Day at the museum. It's at the UC Berkeley's Magnus Collection of Jewish Art and Life. This will be an opportunity to learn about Jewish art and history from diverse perspectives. Admissions is, get ready. Admissions is free. And this event, though it is targeting elementary students and families, is open to everyone in our BUSD community. On May 15th, I will be joining our 10th grade students at a presentation by a woman whose parents, alongside her grandparents and aunt, survived the Holocaust by going into hiding in an attic in Amsterdam for two years. And we will be engaging in conversation with her, and I'm inviting you all to our last board meeting of the month, where we will also have our students from BUSD themselves here to talk about their experience and highlight again some of the amazing of the Jewish community here in Berkeley. That's just one. We are also celebrating, in the month of May, Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's a chance for Berkeley to recognize and appreciate the invaluable impact of our AAPI community locally and historically. We have, again, created family guides, resources, and reading lists in honor of this community. And speaking of reading, tomorrow, May 2nd, in this room, we'll be hosting a special family literacy event featuring a collection of award-winning stories of the Asian American and Pacific Islander experience. So you guys are here tonight? Where is it gonna be tomorrow? Where are you gonna be tomorrow? Right here. And what's so exciting about this night, besides the fact that it's gonna be family members and students and community members coming together and engaging in reading, but we actually have a special chance to hear from our local graphic novelist, Deanne Pham, and they will be here to talk about their latest young adult graphic memoir called Family Style: Memoirs of an American from Vietnam. You're gonna get to hear it live from the author. And if you are one of the first 30, it's gonna be a packed house, I'm telling you now. If you are one of the first 30 families, you get to get a book for free. Is it gonna be autographed? I wonder if it's gonna be autographed. Come and see. I want to thank our BUSD librarians and our OFI staff for working with our AAPI community to put on this event and to host this event. Both of these events and both of these celebrations, like all of our Heritage Months, are a chance for us as a district to counteractively racist and harmful ideology and other examples of intolerance against our diverse members of our community with our greatest tool. Y'all know what the greatest tool is? Education, come on, we're a whole school district. We continue to reiterate our stance against all forms of hate and othering. On May 13th, from 5:30 to 7:00 PM, BUSD will host a community webinar on Zoom that's entitled, "Recognizing, Preventing, and Responding to Islamophobia, Antisemitism, and Hate." This webinar will provide an opportunity for our community to engage with this important topic and to attend to our central goal of our Heritage Month and Belongings, which, again, is addressing all forms of hate. You guys have been coming here for a while, so you have been hearing about the bathrooms at VHS. And so I am happy, I've been having to hold it in for so long. I'm happy to share that in alignment, oh, I didn't get that, okay. In alignment with our commitment to inclusivity and providing equitable resources for all students, and in response to so many of our students who address our school board, we have converted the Berkeley High School Multi-Stall Girls Bathroom located on the M Building, first floor. You guys don't know where that is, just know that we have made and increased the number of gender-neutral bathrooms at Berkeley High School as of yesterday. And the students made a really cool video, I wish I can show it, about the bathrooms. And so they're excited. We did this work in collaboration with our students, of course, but also in collaborations with our G-Shack Committee, that's Gender Equity Sexual Harm Advisory Committee. The decision was, again, just made to ensure equal access and convenience for all students, regardless of gender. By transitioning the space into an all-student bathroom, we aim to address the gender-neutral bathroom shortage on the VHS campus, as well as provide access to a gender-neutral facility in the M Building. To be clear, students are not required to use the all-student multi-stall bathroom. They can continue using the other facilities available to them in other parts of the M Building. Y'all should clap for that, because that was a big deal. Okay. And you got to clap again, because I'm gonna let you know that we want to say congratulations to John Muir Elementary School for being recognized by the state of California as a bronze-level green-ribbon school. What goes John Muir? John Muir Elementary is one of only 20, you guys, one of 20 schools throughout the state of California to receive this recognition. California Green Ribbon School stands as beacons of innovation that showcase pioneering approaches towards enhanced indoor air quality, the implementation of outdoor classrooms, and comprehensive environmental education initiatives. Finally, I said, it's May, y'all, and today, May 1st, is National School Principal Day. And with being recognized and appreciate our amazing BUSD principals and leaders who guide our schools with passion, vision, and commitment to student success. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Superintendent. We'll now move on to public comments component of our agenda. Before we begin, I'd like to remind you of our decorum expectations during this and all parts of tonight's meeting. We want our meetings to be a safe and welcoming space for all, to feel comfortable, to share their needs and concerns with the board. Most recently, an increasing number of BUSD stakeholders are asking that we do more to create a welcoming environment during these board meetings. As such, we need your help. If everyone would direct their comments to the board and refrain from insulting members of the public here to share, that would be a great start. As our students are our greatest treasure, they participate in these meetings at home and view online. We are asking that we, as a community, become more intentional to ensure that we are not modeling bullying or any type of insulting or intimidating behavior. As per our normal protocol, decorum also includes not disturbing the order of the meeting by booing, hissing, or cheering, or making unfriendly comments. We ask the participants refrain from creating any physical disturbance, speaking out of turn, or preventing or attempting to prevent others from speaking or observing the meeting, entering into or remaining in the area of the meeting room that is not open to the public, or approaching the dais without permission. As Ms. Chides already explained, there are two opportunities for public comment at each meeting, now and at the end of the meeting. If you do not get to speak at the beginning of the meeting, we encourage you to stay and speak at the end of the meeting. You may also email us your comments at boardofed@berkeley.net. The board does not respond directly to comments or questions made during the public comment period. Board members and the superintendent and staff do take notes during the public comment period and may follow up with the speaker after the meeting. These are hybrid meetings, so we have public commenters in the boardroom and online. We have designated 20 minutes to our in-person speakers. This will be followed by 10 minutes for any speakers online. Please do not raise your hand if, online, if you are here in person to speak. The online portion of public comment has been reserved to create equity for those who are unable to attend in person. Anyone online who wishes to make public comments should raise their virtual hand now so that Ms. Chides can organize. And I'm gonna say, if you're online and you're a student, please indicate student next to your name so that we can call you first. Each public commenter will have up to one minute to speak. Depending on the amount of speakers, we will allot additional time for folks that may need translation. Please note that the microphone will shut off at the end of each speaker's allotted time, so manage your comments appropriately. Please keep in mind the given time constraints. Everyone may not get a chance to speak, especially if their comment is not related to an agenda item. We'll call the speakers based on agenda items first. To keep things moving, I'd like to ask the speaker who is next to come forward and wait near the mic. I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. Please pronounce it correctly so that I pronounce it correctly the following time. And now we'll move on to our comments in person. So I'm gonna start with our first comments from a student, October Herdersstein. I'm sorry if I mispronounced her name, October. And then we'll move on to agenda items. So we'll call Carol Perez and Lily Howell after October.
Hello, School Board. As the superintendent mentioned, yesterday morning, an email went out to the students, parents, teachers, and other staff of Berkeley High School announcing the opening of a new gender-neutral bathroom. While I've been working with Yasmina, and I've known about this change for longer than a day, it's hard to put into words what it's like to walk past a newly-installed all-student restroom sign. My life, as well as the lives of many others, have been dedicated to this issue for the last seven months. We've been at almost every schoolroom meeting since November 15th of last year. The difference your action makes, the difference the action of students makes, is phenomenal. Thank you to Yasmina, to Jennifer Shonowski, to the board, to Ms. Superintendent, to my fellow Gaia leaders, and to every parent and admin who has helped us in this process. This fight isn't over, but for the first time, while I've been at VHS, I have confidence that change will continue to happen. Thank you again.
And thank you to our students for being here. Next, we have Carol Perez, followed by Lily Howell, and then Melina Landry and Yessenya Moran.
Sorry, I was about to save my time, but then you called who I was gonna save to.
So we have four speakers for this item.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Carol Perez. I am a resident of Berkeley, a parent of two BUSD students, and have worked for BUSD through the Office of Family Engagement and Equity for over 10 years. I'm here with my OFI family to urge you to vote to use LCAP reserves and any other funding to maintain a fully-staffed OFI office. We are a critical resource to our school communities and LCAP unduplicated students. We work directly with our most marginalized and vulnerable populations and provide essential support so that families can fully engage in their children's education. The LCAP focal students and families need more support at our school sites, not less. They are the students who will be disproportionately impacted by the elimination of our positions.
Thank you. Next, we have Lily Howell, followed by Melina Landry, and then Yessenya Moran.
Hi, my name is Lily Howell, and I'm an OFI specialist. I'm urging you tonight to maintain OFI staffing. As OFI staff, we provide intense targeted outreach and support to our most disenfranchised families. These marginalized families are families that are unhoused, in crisis, don't read or write, don't speak English, are experiencing domestic violence, and are struggling with the most basic needs. We engage, equipped, and empower families by building strong personal relationships, parental capacity, and a sense of belonging. We collaborate and coordinate with site staff, district personnel, county services, and community organizations. We cultivate families by enriching their soil and tending their development through the resulting flower, armed with the tools to navigate, advocate, and empower. I want to acknowledge the warranted discussions that ask for data to measure and evaluate our work. In fact, we haven't had a system for centralized data collection since we transitioned from illuminate to infinite campus. While there has been development of measurable goals, we need the tools to track the data that informs our work. However, I do not believe that is the role of the frontline worker. Please keep a staff to do this very important work and give us the tools and structure that is so needed.
Next, we have Melina Landry, followed by Yessenya Moran.
Hi, my name is Melina Landry, and I'm also an OFI specialist. I've been with the district for 14 years. During the 2022-23 school year, I applied for OFI, and it was a long, arduous, and demanding road to finally join this team. I've never been so happy, excited, and fulfilled coming to work every day before joining this team. I have directly supported students and families with the most basic needs, such as navigating food insecurities, homelessness, the school system, mental health support, access to clothing for students, and much more in just the short eight months that I've been with OFI. And this is only possible because of the trust that I have fostered with families and students over that eight-month timeframe. Before this promotion, I was seriously considering leaving the district altogether. I urge you to approve the use of the proper funds to keep OFI staff so that I can continue to wake up and do something that I love, and also support families to book the capacity to become partners.
Thank you. And next, we have Ms. Yessenya Moran. And then after Ms. Moran, we'll have Peter B.
My name is Yessenya Moran, and I was gonna save my time to them, but.
Sure.
Yeah, you can save your time for somebody else, one more commenter on this item.
I'm okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Peter B., followed by Matthew Hirsch.
All right, good evening, everyone. First of all, I support them, I support everybody. My name is Peter Bascom, I'm a PE teacher. I've been in the district for a year and a half. I've noted three things. One, lack of PE teachers at the elementary schools. There's only a few schools that have them. Two is independent study for PE credit at middle schools. I'm not sure why that is there. That shouldn't be happening. Number three is my biggest concern. I think it's a lack of compliance at the high school level, especially. A school of over 3,000 students, there's only four PE teachers. Please explain that to me, because that's, could be my job there, plus for, plus other teachers. All ninth graders are supposed to be enrolled in PE, and they are not. They need to be enrolled. They can only be exempted if they pass the PFT as a ninth grader. Too many students are not enrolled at the high school. That is a big concern.
Next, we have Matthew Hirsch, followed by Laura Grossman.
Hey, everyone. Matthew Hirsch, I'm a fifth-grade parent and a second-grade parent at Oxford Elementary School. I'm here tonight on pretty short notice. We had a cyberbullying incident in the fifth grade at Oxford recently. I believe this incident affected all the fifth-grade families in one way or another. And obviously, I'm gonna limit what I'm saying here tonight, in part because I'd prefer to speak with the parents at Oxford. Also, I want to talk more with my fifth grader before I speak publicly about the issue. But the most constructive thing I think I can do here tonight, aside from one voice support for some other parents who I think you'll hear from tonight, I want to do that. I want to voice support for somebody I believe is a very capable principal who's working through this issue with us. Lastly, please start collecting some data and monitoring and figuring out how to enforce no cell phones and connected devices in our elementary schools.
Thank you. Next, we have Laura Grossman, followed by Sabrina Cabella.
Good evening, School Board members. My name is Laura Grossman, and I began teaching ESL at Berkeley Adult School in 1990. I have also been the coordinator of the ESL department for the past 13 years. I'm going to be speaking about some issues important to the adult school. We are hourly, part-time employees at Berkeley Adult, and for years, at the bottom of the pay scale of the adult schools in the surrounding area. We recently made gains in compensation that brings us closer in pay rates to our neighboring adult schools. We still have a ways to go to be aligned with the median level of pay offered for adult schools in the area. When I started in 1990, I was rated as a first-year teacher, despite having accumulated years of teaching experience and service before that. Meanwhile, K-12 BUDSD teachers had their experience rated in. This is simply inequitable.
Thank you, Ms. Grossman. Next, we have Sabrina Cabella, followed by Dai Soy.
Hi, I hadn't planned on speaking tonight, but I represent the subs here for Berkeley Unified and for BFT, and I would like to speak for our subs who cover for teachers when they're sick or when they're in a required IEP meeting. We need more subs in our district, and we need to pay them better. We're competing with a lot of other districts, and we have a hard time retaining them because they're going elsewhere. I'm the site sub at Oxford, and I fill in often for when we can't get a sub. And I know that when I was teaching at Washington, when we didn't get a sub, kids would get farmed out to other classrooms, which is just a disaster. And it suits nobody, and very little learning gets done. So I'd like to encourage us to work harder, pay subs more, keep our site subs, because we fill such vital roles in our district. And, yeah, that's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dai Soy, followed by Arden and Sheila.
Good evening. My name is Diana Soy, and I'm here representing BUSD API, a group of community organizers representing parents, caretakers, teachers, and staff who are here today to voice our support for our superintendent as she prepares to testify in a congressional hearing next week. A group was established in 2021 to address rising xenophobia and racism in BUSD. Our group works in solidarity with others who share our commitment to cultivate an inclusive, anti-racist learning environment in the BUSD community. In our time working with the superintendent, we have found her to be a champion for many communities, not just ours, that have historically been marginalized. Our superintendent supports our vision that every AAPI child leaves BUDSD with a rooted sense of self that has been intentionally nurtured and affirmed. And we know that her work extends to supporting not only AAPI students, but all students in our district. Superintendent, we thank you for your leadership. Know that we, BUDSD API, wish you well, give you strength to stand up for what we know is right for our babies. And we have.
Thank you. Next, we have Arden, followed by Sheila and Louise. We have three speakers on this item. Okay. Okay. This is my spot. Okay. So it's just one minute, and then three more speakers are left for this item. So it's yourself and then two additional speakers. Okay.
Good evening, Superintendent Mortel and board members. My name is Jeanette, and I'm alumni of BUSD class of 1988. I have a large Berkeley extended family, and we are a family active in local and global politics with many decades of work in the Berkeley community. We are a multiracial family, and we are Jewish. I have been an educator for 29 years and counting. I am in my 18th year as an administrator. I am disappointed in the recent lawsuits against the district. I do not believe those lawsuits represent a majority of the people in Berkeley. I hope you will not be discouraged. I hope you feel our support and know we are with you as you uphold and maintain the progressive movement in Berkeley. Being bold with our support of students of color and all marginalized students is crucial at this moment and all moments. With everything going on around the country, we must stay steadfast in our anti-racism work and in the work.
Thank you. We have two more speakers on this item.
Louise is seating her time. She can read the rest. Louise can read the rest.
So we're right here. Okay. I want you to.
I just want you to know that you have a lot of support as you are called to Washington, DC. We see you joining with the voices of the justice seekers who have been called to testify before such committees throughout history. Many of us stay here in Berkeley because of the belief, the hope, and the promise of a different kind of city. We are targeted by those outside our community who link up with a few within our community because they know we are progressive thinkers and movement shakers. As an educator and community member, I wanted to reach out and share my support for you. We must tell and teach the truth, even when it is difficult and possibly uncomfortable, in a developmentally appropriate way. The Berkeley teachers, as you know, are overwhelmingly fantastic. We know how to do this. Please adopt the Liberated Ethnic Studies curriculum. Respectful African.
Hello, I'm seating my time to my daughter. Sheila, seating it to Zady.
Yeah, she has one minute. Thank you.
Hello, Superintendent and BUSD board members. Superintendent, we wish you all the best luck in Congress. I went to BUSD schools from K to 12. For many of us who grew up in Berkeley, the politics we learned from our parents and educators to be right and wrong usually were morally right and morally wrong, humane and not humane. So when I would hear peers talk about Israel and Palestine, a topic we could only learn about from our parents or our religious sanctuaries, I was under the impression that Israel was morally right, and subsequently, Palestine was morally wrong. And that's all I really learned about Palestine in a formal setting until college. In high school, we learned about the Native American Aloni people, whose land we stole, South Africa, and the entire history of their apartheid, Cuba and the revolutionary leaders, Haiti and their upsetting of the European continent with their revolt and uprising, and more. Our history on liberation movements in BUSD high schools were far from perfect. All of these topics being heavily watered down by teachers as per the curriculum. Though imperfect, I'm still glad these movements were taught.
Thank you. You did not get to finish your comments, you can email us at boardofed@berkeley.net. You can email us your comments that you weren't able to finish, thank you. Next, I'm gonna call up Mati Tebum, followed by Sinead Dewitt. Sure, so you have two speakers on that item, on the item of antisemitism.
I'd sleep my time to Ilana Perlman.
Sure, yes, come ahead. And then Ms. Perlman, if you want to come close to, if you're in the boardroom.
I can just start anytime. Hi, I'm Alad Ziv. I'm a Berkeley parent and had two children go through the high school, and one more child hopefully going through the high school soon. I want to talk about the topic of the Liberated Ethnic Studies curriculum. I viewed some of the slides, I found that they were exclusive in many ways. One particular story that I think they were exclusive of is my own family's. My father was born in Iraq, he's a Jew. Most of the Jews in Israel have same stories. These people were, many of them left under duress, were ethnically cleansed from their lands. They live in Israel now. They are not comfortable becoming a minority in an Arab-Jarid country. And none of that was represented in the Liberated Ethnic Studies curriculum. I think that's unfair, and I think it's not teaching one of the essence of the conflict. Thank you. I think that's unfair, and I think it's not teaching the, one of the essence of the conflict. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I think somebody seated their time to Ms. Perlman, followed by Dorit Dorance and Faith M.
So after our speaker just spoke, somebody in the back made a farting sound, which he continues to do, and I just, I cannot tolerate that. I want to call that out and name that. He does that every time, and it's just sad.
Okay, stop making that sound. Thank you, Ms. Perlman.
So my name's Alana, and I've been a BUSD parent for 10 years. This has been the saddest, most divisive, and painful school year my family has ever experienced. It is demoralizing to share stories of antisemitism at these meetings amongst the backdrop of laughter and jeering by those who seek to undermine the lived and true experiences of Jewish students at BUSD. And it has worsened when community members repeat antisemitic tropes that leaders fail to condemn in real time. While we celebrate Jewish American Heritage Month, Jewish students across our nation are being physically and emotionally assaulted under the guise of being anti-war, and Jewish Americans like Hersh Goldberg Pollan, born right here in Berkeley, remain hostage in Gaza. At just 0.2% of the global population, Jews are truly a minority deserving of protection. We're an incredibly resilient people, and we will continue showing up until every child feels safe in school. My hope for the remainder of the school year is that BUSD acknowledges its blind spots, believes Jewish students, and actively eradicates antisemitism.
Thank you, Ms. Perlman. Please don't forget to email the rest of your comments to the board. Next we have Dorit Dorance, followed by Faith M.
Good evening. I'm a Jewish resident of Berkeley, and I support ethnic studies. But I do not support the liberated version of ethnic studies that Governor Newsom refused to sign. This is because it contains political propaganda and it supports the idea of critical race theory. There are teachers at BUSD who are promoting propaganda in their classrooms because of the training they have received from the teacher you hired to teach the liberated version of ethnic studies. This version doesn't include the long history of the Jewish people as a persecuted minority. The teachers' promotion of ceasefire walkouts and support for Palestinians has promoted antisemitism on our campuses. It's your job to make BUSD a district that is a safe place for learning for all students. Antisemitism marks the demise of a pluralistic democracy. You should be teaching the enormous value of a democracy that respects all people and doesn't turn one group against another. You have knowingly gone against federal law to the detriment of our students. It's time to change.
Thank you, Ms. Dorance. If you could email us the rest of your comments, it'd be appreciated. Next we have Faith M., followed by Jeremy, and the last speaker will be Alad Ziv.
Thank you for acknowledging Jewish American Heritage Month, which aims to promote greater understanding and appreciation of Jewish history and culture, and acknowledges the challenges that American Jews have faced and overcome. Condemnations of anti-Jewish hatred are the first step in countering false and inflammatory narratives against Jews. Hatred of Jews predated the Holocaust and were fueled by vicious libels about Jewish cultural practices, many of which we've seen in Berkeley. Beyond just teaching tolerance and respect, factual histories, including lessons on Israel, must serve a central role in the education of children and adults. Despite attempts by anti-Zionists to undo the centrality of Israel and peoplehood to Jewish identity, Zionism remains a core component of Jewish identity, and it must be taught that way. Thank you.
Next we have Jeremy, followed by Alad Ziv. And I'm sorry if I mispronounced your name.
Thank you. My name is Jeremy. I've got three kids in Berkeley Public Schools, a second grader and a fifth grader at Ruth Acty and a King Middle School student. And I wanted to speak a little bit about their experience. I wanted to speak a little bit about LES. I wanted to speak a little bit about psychological safety and what I know that does to the learning environment. I think we all understand or have seen some of the research around psychological safety, and that when you're feeling threatened, your ability to learn plummets. My own children, over the course of the last several months, have had the experience of being in a situation where because they don't renounce their people's right to self-determination in their own indigenous land, they feel very othered and tokenized and afraid to speak up about how they actually feel with the very people who they've grown up with. We love the teachers and the community of Berkeley, but I know that this is my own family's personal experience with it, and from what I've seen, many of the feelings or ideas presented in LES don't. Okay.
If you could email us the rest of your comments, I'd be appreciated. And then the last commenter for in person is Alad Ziv. Sure, thank you. Mr. Tabum has not spoken. I think I called him first. Yep.
We just want. Good evening. You say that we're against hate, and you're united against hate. That does not go along with supporting, enabling, and allowing anti-Zionism. Vertile anti-Zionism. Zionism is the belief that Jews, like all other peoples, deserve a land. Deserve a land. If you accept a narrative taught in classrooms that says that it's not correct, you are allowing hate against me, against my people. Most Jews, Judaism, at its core, it's tied in a biblical chord with the land of Israel. It's one of the same. Read your Bible, read the history book. Where it's one of the same. Yes, there are some Jews, and I'm happy they're not experiencing antisemitism, who are not interested in that, but the majority of Jews.
Thank you, Mr. Tabum. If you could email the rest of your comments, I'd be appreciated. Now we're going to move to online comments. And so I know that some folks online have requested translations, so just so we can accommodate for translation, Ms. Chares, let's start with Ms. Marina Cruz. Señora Cruz, vamos a comenzar con usted. Le vamos a dar dos minutos debido a que vamos a tener traducción en la reunión.
Si, hola, me escuchas.
Eh, si la escuchamos, pero está un poco bajo el micrófono. Marina, lea sus comentarios y cuando termine yo le produzco.
Perfecto.
Ahora sí la escuchamos.
Hola, mi nombre es Marina Cruz. Yo me gradué de Berkeley High School en el 2001, y en mi familia hay ocho niños graduados de Berkeley High School. Solo una se ha graduado de la universidad de mis compañeros de Berkeley High School, de 12 que conozco hasta el día de hoy. Ninguno fue a la universidad, ni yo tampoco. A mi hija le falta un año para graduarse de San Francisco State. Me han apoyado los maestros de Family Engagement. Me han mostrado el camino. Sin nuestros programas, sin nuestros maestros que hablan español, no sé cómo lo lograríamos. Yo, si yo y mis compañeros no nos graduamos, no queremos que nos quiten los fondos y los programas para que nuestros hijos sí vayan a la universidad. Que, que no nos recorten programas ni el dinero. Somos personas que hacemos taxes y pagamos tuition. El día de hoy, mi nombre no es Marina Cruz, levanto mi voz por todos los que hemos limpiado tu casa, hemos cuidado a tus niños, y por todos los que hemos preparado tu comida de tu restaurante favorito. Gracias.
Hi, my name is Marina Cruz, and I graduated from VHS in 2001. I'm making me the eighth VHS graduate in my family. As far as I know, only one classmate in my senior cohort went on to college. Today, I am proud to share that my daughter is one year away from completing her undergraduate degree at SF State. I am grateful for the support we have received from the Office of Family Engagement Equity, who have assisted me in navigating the educational system. Had it not been for OFIs bilingual staff, I don't know if I could have, if I would have been able to support my children to excel academically. Today, I want to use my voice to speak on behalf of those of us who have cleaned your homes, cared after your children, and prepare to serve your food at your favorite restaurant. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Chares, I just noticed that one of the online speakers included in their name Student. They just added Student to Sid if you go down the list. So we'll promote that speaker next and then continue down the list.
Am I going now? Okay. Yes. Um, hi, my name is Sid. I'm a Berkeley High student. And I just would like to say that the Liberated Ethnic Studies program was far from equal. I noticed a lot, as a person who is quite involved in her Jewish identity and quite involved in my Jewish practices and knows a lot about the history of Israel and the history of Zionism, just like to say that the perspectives in the videos that we were shown and the articles we read were far from equal. A lot of this stuff did not make sense. A lot of the stuff did not add up, and it was far, like a lot of propaganda, which I'd like to say. And my cousin, like, also did share something?
Okay. Um, hi, I'm Shashana. I'm seventh grader at King. And I would like to say I love all my teachers, except I know some of my Jewish friends are scared to go to class because of what they've heard in class. And I know this one teacher played an anti-Zionism podcast that said Israel stole its identity from Palestine. And I do not think that is equal. I do not think it is fair. So, yeah.
We would just like teachers to educate themselves before trying to pose their ideals on other students, especially when it's hateful towards Jewish people.
Love my Israeli brothers.
Thank you. Next we'll move on to Lee Barnett, followed by former council member Cheryl Davila.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, my name is Lee Barnett. I'm the parent of a fifth grader and a second grader at Oxford Elementary. I'm here to express my concern for the safety of the children at Oxford Elementary. I am also here to express my concern for the lack of safety that is felt among some of the students. Some individuals at Oxford had taken photos of other students without their consent and posted these photos on social media along with defamatory comments of a sexual nature without, about these students. My child was one of the individuals targeted in this incident, and we have also been made aware that several of other children were targeted targets of posts that included photographs and slanderous and transphobic comments. The individuals who made this post have been identified by other students who learned about these posts at school and reported it to their parents. The individuals who made these posts are also known to have engaged in various forms of bullying and derogatory behavior toward many adults and children at Oxford. I want to strongly encourage.
Thank you so much, Lee. If you could email us the rest of your comments, that'd be appreciated. Next we have former council member Cheryl Davila, followed by LB.
Thank you. Um, yes, also, I just wanted to state that May is also Mental Health Month. And we have to take that into consideration when we know that we're living in a genocide and that Palestinians' lives are being murdered. And we need to teach Palestine. We need to teach ethnic studies. And we, you know, please consider that Zionism is equal to hatred and equal to bigotry. Berkeley is supposed to be a city that is united against hate, and that comes in all forms. So please don't fall into the anti-Zionism is equal to antisemitism. That's, they're not equated, they're not equal. And please.
Thank you, former council member. Next we'll move on to LB, followed by Jamie Davidson.
Hi, my name is Lori, and I'm a VHS parent, and I'm seating my time to Diana.
Is Diana with you?
She's on the Zoom waitlist, I believe.
Diana Nading.
Yes.
What's Diana's lesson? I think it's Diana Nading. Yeah.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much. Technical difficulties. I'm a Latina parent in BUSD, and I'm here to speak about my experience with the censorship that is occurring in our community, specifically around any form of solidarity with Palestine. One of Mexico's most beloved celebrations is Dia de los Niños, Day of the Children, celebrated every April 30. At Silvia Mendez, we bring that tradition yearly to our kids, thanks to the loving work of our staff and Latina mothers. For this year's celebration, we co-created a banner that read, Solidaridad con todos los niños del mundo, Solidarity with All Children of the World. The letters were colored red, black, and green. One parent claimed the message and colors were too political and took the banner down without our consent. I was devastated that our message of love for children all around the world, including in Gaza, would be attacked and smeared as political. Our school, Silvia Mendez, is named after a girl who braved the color lines of the 20th century. Our community celebrates gender fluidity and has given space to address other social justice matters, including allyship with the undocumented. I'm asking the school board to protect the rights of all parents and children and stand up against censorship. Thank you.
Next we have Jamie Davidson, followed by Narid Said Newer Interiors. Thank you, muted.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Jamie Davidson, and I'm a first grade teacher at Washington, and I've taught for 13 years in BUSD. I'm also having a baby in July. I find it insulting and honestly ridiculous that anyone in this district finds it acceptable to offer teachers 25% of their pay during child during leave. If I didn't have sick days to use, I'd be leaving this job because 25% of our pay is unmanageable where we live. But using my sick days means that when I'm back at work and my little one is sick and needs me, I have less days and time to give him. It should not be one or the other. Get paid a quarter of your salary or deplete your sick days. I consider myself one of the lucky ones because I've saved my sick days for exactly this situation. But our newest teachers do not have that option. If teacher retention and the mental well-being of your teachers matters to you, show us by giving us more than 25% of our salary while we care for our own children. It's the very least you can do, considering we give so much of our time caring for our schoolchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Narid Said Newer Interiors, followed by Gladys Ocampo Stout. And the last public commenter online will be Sahar Habib Ghazi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi. My name is Narid Said. I'm a Berkeley resident and the mother of two fifth graders and a fourth grader at Oxford Elementary. I'm here today to express my deep concern for the safety of my children, the safety of all the children at Oxford Elementary. As some of you may know, last week, multiple fifth grade students broke school, community, and meta-user agreements by engaging in non-consensual photography of fellow students and then posting those photographs in a public domain with slanderous, inflammatory, and dangerous commentary, including but not limited to the insinuation of sexual acts and transphobic commentary. The nature of these posts also infringes on individual laws around the right to privacy, breaking of the rules and laws is the danger these posts place on the classmates by clearly using their names, showing their faces, and again, the insinuation of sexual acts by 10-year-olds, which is bordering on sexual harassment and child endangerment. These types of posts are a type of violence and must be addressed immediately with consequences to those responsible. I strongly encourage the board and school district to reexamine their policies around devices in the elementary school environment.
Thank you. Next we have Gladys Ocampo Stout, and the last public commenter will be Sahar Habib Ghazi.
Point of border. I just wanted to acknowledge that the agenda has approved for 30 minutes of public comment, and we are well beyond that time.
Thank you. We've had technical difficulties, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Thank you. We've had technical difficulties, but I uh, appreciate your comments. Thank you. Ms. Chires, can you promote Okampo Stout? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gladys Okampo Stout and I am a BUSD parent and I'm here on behalf of Latinos Unidos of Berkeley to ask you to please not only maintain the Office of Family Engagement Staff, but to add to the staffing. We are also asking for additional .5 staffing that was originally designated for a full-time Spanish-speaking position at the district level. A few weeks ago, you will heard the testimonials of Spanish-speaking parents who are being trained to be leaders at their school sites and community. This work could not have been done without the OFE staff. This type of work is crucial in expanding our net of outreach, but it is unrealistic to expect all the work to be done at the district level at a .5 position. Our district constantly talks about addressing the needs of our most vulnerable and neglected communities, and OFE is at the heart of the work. All of our OFE staff do some of the hardest work that their district requires. To cut the staffing and to limit it to where it is now is unfair to our communities. We hope that when you vote on your budget priorities, that this is at the top of your list. We also want to let the superintendent know that you have our support and we stand with you in solidarity this week. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last uh, public comment of the evening will be from Zahar Habib Ghazi.
Hi, my name is Sahar Habib Ghazi. I'm a parent with Berkeley Families for Collective Liberation. There have been many mentions of hate today. I wanted to remind everyone, the greatest act of hate is killing. The greatest act of hate is bombing a people into oblivion. There are no universities left in Gaza. Children, if they aren't one of the 17,000 who've been killed or maimed or orphaned, or those who have survived, have not gone to school since October. The Israeli state has robbed a million children of education for a year and it is, was funded by our tax dollars, the same ones that fund our schools. Our schools that also educate Palestinian-American children. After Spanish, Arabic is the most spoken language in our district. We cannot deny the existence of Arab-American, Palestinian-American, Muslim-American children who have been suffering throughout this genocide funded by our taxpayer money. For decades, the Israeli state has justified its violent clampdown of Palestinian protest in Israel, West Bank, and Gaza.
Thank you. You did not get to finish public comment, please feel free to email boardofed@berkeley.net. Now we will hear comments from our district committees. Each committee has five minutes to address the board on issues under its purview. Ms. Chires, do we have any committees here to speak? PTA Council Impact. Okay, we'll call in that order. PTA Council and followed by the representative from the PAC.
Good evening, Superintendent and School Board members. I'm Rita Smith. This is Diana Soy, two members of the Berkeley PTA Council Executive Leadership Team. This is the first time this year BPTA Council has come to report out at a school board meeting. We're here to highlight some of the issues we as a collective PTA have been discussing and working on. We'd like to begin our report out by acknowledging that Superintendent Ford Mirthel has been asked by the United States Congress to testify about the impact on our community events, sorry, on the impact on, on our community of events that have occupied the national news lately. In the current national political environment, we believe this poses a challenge not only to our superintendent, but also to our community as a whole, from the unpredictable press and social media repercussions of our testimony, whatever they may be. Our school district has so much going for it and much ongoing work to continue improving for all of our students. We call on our community to come together and support as she leaves for Washington and more importantly, unified and strong after she returns. BUSD's enduring commitment that all schools welcome and work for all students and their families under renewed leadership of our superintendent is in keeping with the National PTA's mission to make every child's potential a reality.
Now our BPTA report. Though it should not be a dominant activity of a PTA, our PTAs spend most of our time fundraising. Collectively, we've raised approximately $1.4 million last year and are projected to raise closer to $2 million this year. As a point of comparison, a few years ago, a 900-student elementary school in a wealthier district in Fremont raised some $30 per student annually. BUSD PTAs raise up to more than 20% times that amount. With these monies, we pay annual, we pay for art, music, PE teachers, Spanish, math and literacy tutors, and administrative staff. As with all private funding, we have had long concerns about the potential for inequity and unfairness, especially as we see significant fundraising variables across elementary schools. This focus on fundraising has led our PTA leaders to report the heavy lift typically held by a handful of volunteers to put on these fundraisers, auctions, read-a-thons, walk-a-thons, and direct ask campaigns. By the end of their elementary school years, these families become far less engaged in our school, having burned out. Volunteers are essential for maintaining this level of fundraising, holding community events, to say nothing of the importance of the role of advocating for our students, including school site councils, PNO, PACT, the uh, SPAK, et cetera. We are happy to report, though, that post-pandemic, families have returned to the classrooms and schoolyards, engaging with their school community and volunteering for events like Heritage Month celebrations, ensuring drop-off and pick-up tra- traffic safety, and reading to students in the classroom. PTA members continue to find, find this level of fundraising inappropriate to the purpose of PTAs.
Next, after-school programming.
Um, after-school programming continues to be a major concern for our elementary school sites. Uh, PTAs report working with their principals to fund and plug holes again in after-school programming. We appreciate the openness of the extended learning staff, Kristy Rosigno and Brazil McIntyre, who came to our council meeting to present and listen to our members, and their continued participation with the PTA Collaborative Working Group in this area. Bears and learns waitlists need to be assessed to determine the true need in the community. Our school PTAs are looking to the district to provide more comprehensive and equitable after-school programming solutions, including providing late busing services. PTAs continue to partner and support this work, but we cannot adequately address the after-school programming challenge without the district's leadership and commitment.
Next, curriculum. We appreciate that Director Chris Albeck led our speaker series to present the district's current objectives, objectives and progress with math, literacy, and social studies curriculum. Our members have many questions concerning how the new curriculum will address the academic needs of our students, particularly addressing the widening learning gap. Finally, BSEP. The Berkeley PTA Council endorsed, uh, and our school site PTAs supported the BSEP bond measure Prop H. We thank Board Member Jennifer Shenovsky for shepherding this initiative and being a consistent attendee to our monthly meetings. Finally, our next meeting on May 22nd will focus on the transitions to middle school to high school. Omar Gudini, Dino Senior Psychologist from the Child Mind Institute will lead a short presentation about developmental norms and expectations.
And for those here, it's actually elementary to middle and middle to high.
Thank you, thank you so much. If you weren't able to finish your comments, please email Board of Education. And next we have comments from the PAC.
Good evening, everyone. Peace and blessings to the audience and to the board. My name is Natasha Sandeford. I am co-chair of the Parent Advisory Committee PAC on the Local Control Accountability Plan, also known as LCAP. Tonight on the agenda as item 14.1, the board will vote on the use of an LCFF reserve. Please know that because this was brought to the Budget Committee SPAK the day before our PAC meeting and after the SPAK meeting had been extended past the 6:00 PM official ending, the PAC has not reviewed the use of these funds and is unready to advise on this action. Last week, the PAC submitted its annual feedback to the district. Since November 2023, the PAC has been building knowledge about the LCAP, our role and its development, the LCAP actions, programs, services, and effects. In Berkeley, we are lucky to have a highly engaged community of families, teachers, and students who actively seek out opportunities to reflect on strengths and areas of improvement. The PAC presents the work of seven months in our feedback document submitted to the district and board on April 25th, 2024. I'm here tonight to give a board overview of the content of the document. However, it is not easy to summarize the hours of discussion and collaboration that resulted in 25 pages of detail in a single committee comment. Because next year is the start of a new three-year cycle, the PAC focused on forward-thinking recommendations. Its feedback is mainly on what changes um, are recommended rather than whether or not goals were met in the past year. We began and ended our committee year working through specific themes. Number one, the urgency to address the achievement gap. The PAC sees the need to focus efforts on early education, preschool to kindergarten, grades one and two, where intensive in-time, data-driven support can prevent or offset the need for support in the later grades. This need is in addition to the mandate to help those who struggle later on in school with effective support. Number two, center academic achievement and build strong foundations. Are our core curriculums effective? Do they serve our most vulnerable populations well? Have we created a coherent sequence of learning across grades and schools? Berkeley does not need to be an, an early adopter of every new idea or create something custom for our community. We can wait for evidence of success before experimenting on our children. Number three, more structure and accountability, funding. Fewer projects overall will allow for deeper work and more comprehensive funding for projects, for the projects we do fund. Funding should not continue for projects that do not have evidence of efficacy. All projects using LCFF supplemental funds need to be directed, um, directly linked to supporting local populations. Number four, create belonging and opportunity in every spaces, um, everyday spaces. Of the 604 students who took the LCAP survey this year, 362, more than half, reported not feeding, feeling connected to school. We must investigate the root causes and target those reasons with direct action. We have been benefited from outside support, but BUSD, not contractors, must do the heavy lifting of this work and integrate it into the school day. Making sure to combat bias in our core systems. Our students require cultural competence as well as systems that do not presume ability or interest based on race, ethnicity, opening up opportunity for all. The PAC has been appreciative of the effort um, from BUSD in enlightening plans and systems in a strategic way. We are hopeful that next year's plan will be measurable and coherent. In response to the board presentation on LCAP this past April 7th, the PAC has included feedback on the proposed new goals. Within our document, there is rationale for the recommended shifts in language. In our opinion, the suggestion of combining goals one and two results in an unwieldy goal that would be challenging for committee and staff to track and measure. Therefore, we recommend four goals for the 24-27 LCAP cycle. Goal one, provide high-quality classroom curriculum and data-informed instructional practices that promote college and career readiness and eliminates the achievement gap. Two, implement an MTSS framework work that screens, monitors, and provides necessary timely and effective interventions or evidence-based support at every tier to eliminate barriers to student success. Um, my time is running out. We have three more goals. Um, okay.
Hi, you can email us the complete list, boardofed@berkeley.net. Thank you. And now we move on uh, to union comments. Do you have any labor partners that are ready to make comments, Ms. Chires? Um, Ms. Chires, do we want to take BCC E first since they're here in person and then we'll do?
Is Matt ready?
It's recording, so we can hear you first.
Well, thank you. So, good evening, Board and Superintendent. First, I'd like to acknowledge the hard work that everyone has put in to rescind as many layoff notices as possible. The union is aware of notices that were even rescinded today. Of course, we would like to see the rescission of all classified layoff notices and continue the goal to try not to disrupt programs and personnel, however our work isn't done. Tonight, we have a 1.0 FTE being cut that is the storekeeper's position. Our concern is this is the only position that delivers from the warehouse to various sites throughout the day. This position does surplus pickups, moving transcripts at the end of the year, and moves the science program from school to school. If this position is partially laid off, where is the work going to go? I'd like to shed some light and provide you with an answer. Previously, this position would receive all purchased items for various departments and put the items on the surplus auction, vehicles, supplies, equipment, tools, et cetera. This position previously tagged all items over $500 with tags, kept asset numbers in a folder, and would also engrave equipment. The storekeeper would work as a certified forklift operator for various departments, including but not limited to maintenance, custodial, and operations, Xerox nutrition services, as well as delivered the PPE for COVID and different items for various schools or departments. They used to collect surplus books and other surplus items from various schools and sites. This person will also be the backup delivery driver due to the fact that one delivery driver is half purchasing and half nutrition services. This position also maintains the delivery of computer cards and computers for the technology department. This is a district-wide position with essential duties that support all work sites. It's recently been brought to the union's attention that this employee's work has been absorbed into other classified positions, which should not be happening. The union stance is that you cannot reduce a position for lack of work and then give the work away. Layoffs are supposed to happen due to lack of funds or lack of work. We truly hope that what we said will be taken into consideration and the district will rescind the layoff notice for this position. Another important matter, not that it's not many, but I will stick with these two topics for tonight. Nutrition Services is a program that is state and federal funded through reimbursement. This is known as the Cafeteria Fund. Cafeteria Funds can only be used for meal service for students. It is extremely restricted as it is considered benefits. You can't use benefit money for other programs that do not directly benefit the meals program. With that being said, Nutrition Services has their own funding and is willing to upgrade the salaries for the lowest-paid classified classification that is at a range 29 and at a step one, start at $19.81 an hour. Their funds for this program cannot be assessed and can only be used for purposes that I have already stated. Why is that, that the department cannot receive the requests of support in helping to retain and recruit good people by upgrading the salary? We cannot say it is due to lack of money because the money is there, especially for this program. This department is what feeds our students on a daily basis and during summer break in conjunction with the free and reduced lunch program. We need to support the director in getting their highly dedicated staff adequately compensated correctly when the money is there. The union is asking that the salaries for nutrition service assistants, nutrition service satellite operator, and nutrition service cook is immediately supported. For those who do not understand why we are asking for this support during a time of layoffs and budget cuts, please understand again that Nutrition Services has their own budget that is restricted to this department only. Thank you.
Thank you very much to our labor partners. Oh, we have President Meyer. Thanks, I almost forgot. Thank you, Ms. Chires.
Hello, Superintendent Ford Mirthel and Berkeley School Board Directors. I am Matt Meyer, President of the Berkeley Federation of Teachers. This evening, you will hear from a sample of our members highlighting the issues we face getting paid correctly. Although the district has put in place various systems, not enough has been done to ensure that workers who are legally entitled to accurate and timely pay are in fact paid on time. Although the majority of issues occur at the beginning of the year, there is not a pay period that goes by without a situation needing to be corrected. People are generally underpaid because their FTE is not correct, stipends are not correct, or timesheets have not been processed. These payroll errors cost our educators both money and time. It's more important than ever for our educators to get every dollar they worked for. The hours we spend writing emails and leaving messages could be much better spent. There are lots of reasons why the mistake occurred, but regardless of the reason, it is the district's responsibility to pay employees within five business days the correct amount. We've had situations where it's taken months or years to be paid accurately. Our proposed contract language around payroll errors is necessary to rebuild trust and accountability. Without some real language specified in our contract, there will continue to be a lack of agency. Without some real language specified in our contract, there will continue to be a lack of agency. Let's hear from some of our BUSD employees.
My name is Addison Fonseca, and I am a school counselor at Berkeley High School. Two years ago, I substituted for another counselor who was on maternity leave. I did not receive a response or payment for my work until four months after I completed the work.
Hi, I'm John Gomes, and I was working a long-term sub-job at John Muir Elementary that started in April and ran through October twenty-twenty-three. I informed payroll on October twenty-seventh that I had not been receiving correct pay. On December fifteenth, I received back pay of about seventeen thousand dollars.
My name is LaShel McDaniel, and I teach at Malcolm X Elementary. This year, the district has not paid me my SDI reimbursement. This money was wrongfully taken out of my check for over nine years when I transferred from a classified employee to a certificated employee. I was told that the matter would be resolved in a timely fashion, and I still have not received my refund.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Lee. I'm the school counselor at Berkeley High School, who's been with the district since twenty-twenty-one. In my brief time with the district, I've struggled to get paid for many jobs from coaching to substituting to attending affinity-based events. At some point, it was about ten timesheets that were not clearly resolved, and these timesheets added up to thousands of dollars, money which I had already worked for.
Hello, my name is Lency Olson. I teach first grade at Ruth Acti. Eight years ago, I was placed in the wrong column on the salary schedule and have been underpaid. I was notified of that in October. It has been two hundred and four days, and I have not seen any of the twelve thousand dollars I am owed. The district recently sent me an email saying on May fifteenth I'll be reimbursed. That will be a total of two hundred and twenty-six days that it took to reimburse me what I am owed.
Hi, I'm Gwen Rogers. I teach kindergarten at John Muir Elementary, and in twenty-twenty-one, I was paid the wrong salary. I sent an email May twenty-fifth, and it took me six months, twenty-eight emails, and in order to be paid the correct salary, October twenty-second.
My name is Liza. I joined BUSD in twenty-twenty-one and was not placed at the correct column rate for my units that I had turned in via spreadsheet and also all of the transcripts. They placed me two levels below where I was supposed to be paid, which had a huge impact since we were a single-income family at the time. And it took numerous emails and phone calls, starting in August, September, October, and finally in mid-October, I was told that the issue would be resolved and I would be paid at the correct rate.
Hi, my name is Robin. I'm co-athletic director at Berkeley High School. My most recent pay issue that took a long time to resolve was regarding stipend for my position. It was not paid to me at the beginning of the year, took a month to resolve to get the right amount of pay, and then inexplicably was taken away again the following March. And I had to go about the similar steps in order to get it back.
As you can see, these are not isolated cases. There are dozens of situations just like these that couldn't fit into a five-minute union comment. The USD employees deserve dignity and respect, which means we need to be paid for the work we perform correctly and on time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Charis, for those union comments. Seeing that there are no additional union comments, we'll now hear from our board members. And before we start board member comments tonight, I'd like to remind our colleagues to review our governance team commitments as we also strive to be the best role models we can for our students. And with that, we'll start with board member comments. Colleagues, I normally call on everybody first. I have some comments that I'm going to start, and then I will resume with the normal protocol. I see our vice president will go right after. So, thank you, everyone, for coming for our public comments. It's great to hear from our educators, students, and families who are deeply engaged in our work to ensure that all our students can thrive in our schools. I want to start off by congratulating our amazing middle school jazz band students who played at Yoshi's this past Monday. A special shout-out to Mr. Roland Brown for coordinating the concert and to all three middle school jazz teachers for preparing our Longfellow, King, and Willard students for this really professional musical experience. I was there as a proud mom, but it was wonderful to see the students really feel excited to be in such a professional space. So, thank you to all our teachers who worked hard to make that experience happen for our students. I'm also excited to announce to my board colleagues that next week on May eighth, we know we're all, it's a very important date for our district. I, for many reasons, but one of the reasons why it's also important is because I'll be attending the Fluent English Proficiency Celebration at Longfellow, and we'll be there to celebrate the progress and success of our amazing English language learners. I just want to acknowledge that many folks have written to us with inquiries about the superintendent's testimony before Congress. Just wanted to say that I have tremendous confidence in Superintendent Ford Morthele's abilities to represent our unique and diverse community. I also know that these comments are shared by many of our wonderful affinity group partners who came here tonight. And so, thank you for your support for our superintendent. I know that our superintendent will publicly show our country how we and Berkeley work together to stop incidents of antisemitism and any cases of hate in our schools. My expectation is that our national leaders will hold a conversation that can result in a constructive outcome to continue to protect all students in our schools, and I thank our superintendent for courageously representing our district next week. And with that, I'll turn it over to my board colleagues, and first, I think I saw Vice President Brown's hand go up, and then we'll go around.
Good evening, everyone. It's so great to see all of your faces during this May first meeting. As you know, this is a special meeting of the board, so thank you for adjusting and for joining us this evening. I'd like to thank you all for your dedication and your advocacy that you provided tonight. Speaking on the following topics, our success that we found around our gender-neutral restrooms at Berkeley High School. Those who spoke, yeah, go ahead and clap for that. Those who spoke in regards to the funding for OFEE, the lack of PE teachers, independent study for PE credit at the middle school, the presence of cellular devices in our elementary schools, the adult school compensation, substitute need and pay, liberated ethnic studies, experiences of antisemitism, censorship at Sylvia Mendez, ongoing compensation needs in the district, the ongoing impacts of cell phone devices, and finally, support for our superintendent as she will be taken away from the task of being an onsite superintendent next week and will be in place testifying in front of Congress. Many of you have emailed us, called us, and stopped us in grocery stores. Some of you scared for our district and for our superintendent. Some of you sharing your fears that this will only further divide our community. Some of you sharing your concerns about how BUSD or our superintendent can manage such a heavy lift given the lack of resources, staff, and time while we are in the middle of LCAP goal-setting, budgeting, season, state testing alongside our regular duties and responsibilities in the district. Some of you even approached us angry that Congress has turned a blind eye to other experiences of racism that has occurred, but the majority of you who spoke to us, spoke to us and shared your support and solidarity as we are the only, and I'm going to say that again, the only K-through-twelve school district who has responded to such a call. As a member of this board, I too stand in solidarity with our superintendent and appreciate this board's decision to show our support in many ways, but not including, but not limited to cancelling our May eighth board meeting and holding this evening's special board meeting in its place. We stand with our superintendent. Earlier, I was taken aback by a comment, or rather, a suggestion that was made to you, Superintendent, when it was suggested that you read your Bible. And I am unsure if the comment was made in an effort to pick at your religion or if it was shared in good faith, and because I always assume the best intentions of people, I'm going to say that it was shared or made in good faith, no pun intended, but it was made in good faith. And since the comment was made, I do encourage you to read, as you already know, where your help comes from. And as you read, know that we are with you, and we trust that you will represent our district's ongoing commitment and values to stand united against hate. And all of you out there, please know that the people united will never be defeated. On a happier note, I do have a few happy comments tonight addressing many local and national holidays and events. And so, please allow me to wish you all a Happy Asian American and Pacific Islander Month and a Happy Jewish American Heritage Month, and as identified by former council member Davila, Happy Mental Health Month. To all of our principals in BUSD, Happy National Principals Day. It has been said that a great principal builds character, inspires dreams, encourages creativity, builds confidence, instills a lot of learning, touches our hearts, and changes our lives and schools forever. And because we won't be here next week, I would like to wish a Happy Teacher Appreciation Week to all of our dedicated and hard-working teachers. One of my favorite quotes says that teachers weren't just born to teach. They were born to inspire others, to change lives and the trajectory of lives, and to never, ever, ever give up, even when faced with challenges that seem impossible. Everyone who remembers their own education remembers teachers, not methods, not techniques, but the teacher, for the teacher is the heart of our educational system. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Brown. Director Shunovsky. You're cute, Lynn. You can go first. I didn't see you there.
Okay, hi, everyone. First of all, Happy API Heritage History Month and Happy Jewish History Month. I just want to say, as a proud Chinese-American student at Berkeley High, I'd like to appreciate the API community and education that I've received. I'm really grateful to have been taught API history and stories throughout my years at Berkeley High, in my English classes, in my history classes. We studied the works of API authors and poets and learned about the histories. And yeah, so with all the diversity at Berkeley High, I'm just very grateful to have felt seen and heard as I know that this isn't reflected in all school districts around the country and to have my identity reflected in the curriculum that I'm taught. Next, I'm in honor of the new opening of the gender-neutral bathroom in the M-Building at Berkeley High. I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of my fellow peers that I've talked with, worked with over the past few months. These peers are October, Emma, James, Azariah, and all of their friends and supporters. My peers have shown the utmost resilience and passion for their basic needs, and I not only respect all of their hard work, communication, and patience with administration, but I'm also extremely proud of them. I know that this is, this is only the first step towards a much larger problem, but seeing the work that you've put into this important issue gives me lots of hope for change to continue at Berkeley High after I graduate this year. Lastly, I just wanted to highlight a very amazing production that our students put on annually. It's called our monologues. And the production is focused on the intersections of identity, trauma, sexuality, race, gender, and so many other topics that are covered. Basically, students submit their stories, and those stories are chosen to be a part of this production, and the goal is to diversify the voices in our community and reflect, like, the diversity of our community. And our students put tons of hours of work in writing this every year, and I can say personally that the performance is absolutely beautiful and so emotional. So, if you're interested in seeing this production, there will be three showings. One this Friday at seven PM, this Saturday at three PM, and this Saturday at seven PM. And the tickets can be bought on the Berkeley High online student store or at the door. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Student Director. I forgot to mention something in my board comments, but Director Chang is going to mention it. And some good news about you that we're going to share with the public. And then Director Shunovsky, did you want to go next? And then I don't know who else wants to go.
Sure. I guess I'm going to start by not trying to say what's already been said so eloquently and clearly. So, I really want to thank President Vasideo and Vice President Brown for their comments in support of our superintendent. I, like you, stand in solidarity beside you, with you, behind you next week. So, thank you for your work. A couple of updates. I'm really excited to see the resolution and support of the Y1 initiative on our agenda today on the consent calendar. This is the youth vote. We promised that our sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds were going to be able to vote in Berkeley School Board elections next year, and the ball is really moving. It's moving quickly. The city of Oakland and City of Berkeley, along with BUSD, we're working on the MOU to try and hammer out the details. Hopefully, that'll be done by the summer. And then will come before us in June so that everybody can start getting educated and ready to move forward on the election for November. I want to once again thank our students and thank Yasmina for all of the work getting those gender-neutral bathrooms to be a reality. It's really great to see how we can identify a problem. We can see a solution, and we can make it happen for our students and by our students. So, thank you. Finally, I want to mention that today is May Day. It is International Workers' Day. And I want to thank all of the workers within our district. I have to say, I think it's kind of ironic that it's also Principals' Day. So, Principals' Day is on, Bosses' Day is on Workers' Day? I don't know. But I especially want to shout out all of the BFT members and our BCC members who make everything run every day, who show up to drive our kids to school, to teach their classes, to take care of them after school, to feed them breakfast, lunch, and snacks, to do all the things you do all the time. So, Happy International Workers' Day, Happy May Day. And lastly, I want to congratulate all of our graduating seniors who in the last couple weeks have accepted and chosen their colleges. For all of our college-bound seniors, it's a really tough decision to make. It's, I know, very fraught, and it feels like it's the rest of your life. I especially want to give a shout-out to our very own Caitlin, who will be studying philosophy, politics, and economics at UPenn. We're very proud of you. So, we're going to wait and see how you change the world over the next four years and then beyond.
Aw, thank you, Director Shunovsky, but you're off the hook, Director Chang. But we are very proud of you, Caitlin. Directors, who would like to go next? I know we have too many directors. I don't know. Director Babar or Director Chang would like to go? Director Chang, all right.
Thank you so much. Good evening, and thank you for joining us. Congratulations again to our student board member Caitlin for your amazing hard work on the board, and your efforts have paid off, and I know you will be contributing greatly to our society in the future and have fun out there, out in Penn, where I'm assuming you're going. I know these are challenging times, but here as in Berkeley, I think we still stand as a community. Here in Berkeley Unified, we are a diverse and intersectional tapestry. In that context, this is a really good month to reflect on what we do share in common. For example, this month is Asian American Heritage Month. Thank you, BUSD API Group, for your efforts raising awareness on the important Thank you BUSD AAPI Group for your efforts raising awareness on the important value of inclusivity. Just last month, we celebrated our Swana community. And this month, we also celebrate our Jewish-American community. Both months reflect some of the core members of our community. The proximity of these three heritage months on the calendar is for me an opportunity to reflect on how we intersect, what common areas we share. Finally, I'm gonna keep this brief today. Again, this has been said before, but I want to voice my support for our superintendent's efforts and her service in leading this district. As she heads to Washington to testify before Congress, I know she'll do great and will be mighty proud of her. And we are in solidarity here in support of Superintendent Ford Motel. Thanks for doing so. Thank you, everyone, for your public comments. Our colleagues have, my colleagues have gone through the list, but everything that you've raised is so important. And thank you to continuing to come to the board and exercise your speech rights and advocate and educate us. Thanks again. And for those who continue to wanna meet with me, don't forget to just ping me an email and we'll, we'll meet via Zoom or for coffee. Thank you again, and I'll turn it over to my colleague for her book comment.
Thank you, Director Babett.
Hello, I will try and be brief so we can move forward. But I do want to acknowledge Berkeley Public Schools Fund and the wonderful Community Block Party that they had. It was so nice to see all of our students perform, so nice to see all of the offerings in BUSD, which Berkeley Public Schools Funds directly supports, and to enjoy the sunny day with lots of smiling faces and proud parents and donors. Thank you, Berkeley Public Schools Fund. You truly do make a direct impact to the joy of the students in BUSD. Secondly, I wanna thank Sylvia Mendez PTA and the Reading for Berkeley for the dyslexia simulation method held on Monday. I would strongly encourage everyone to attend one because I, as well as all of the other participants, developed a deep understanding and empathy for the needs and resilience of our students who continue to learn and persevere while gaining the tools needed for dyslexia. And lastly, I just want to comment that as our board policy 15.5 notes, we do aim to try and end these meetings by 11:00 AM. And so I'm hoping that we can do better in agenda planning, 11:00 PM, do better during agenda planning to make sure that we, we reach that goal because it is unfair to our staff and to members of the public, as well as to us to be making hard decisions later at night. So if we're gonna have a longer public comment period, then we really need to think about shortening the business of the meeting as well. So thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Now, it's time, it's the time in the agenda where we approve our consent calendar. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar?
I move to approve.
Moved by Director Chang, the second, second. Seconded by Director Shunovsky. And Ms. Torres, can you call a roll for this vote?
Director Lau?
Aye.
Director Shunovsky?
Yes.
Director Babett?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yay.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Vasidev?
Yes.
And now we will move on to our first discussion item, Agenda Item 13.1. And Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke, will you be introducing this item? Wait, I'll give you some time to set up. I believe we have 20 minutes for this item, but we are planning on a brief 10-minute presentation and 10 minutes of questions. So good evening, members of the board. I'm Jill Hogan-Dyke, Associate Superintendent. And here with me today are our Climate Literacy TSA, Ms. Ellen McClure, and our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Mr. Christopher Albeck. And they are gonna be sharing an update on our BUSD climate literacy work.
Thank you, Jill. And good evening, BUSD Board Directors. My name is Chris Albeck, and I'm the Director of the Curriculum Instruction Department in BUSD. Tonight, I am joined by my esteemed colleague, BUSD Climate Literacy TSA, Ms. Ellen McClure. Tonight, I am proud to share with you the strides Berkeley Unified is making in the realm of climate literacy. In BUSD, we believe deeply in our purpose statement to enable and inspire our diverse student body to make academic achievement and make positive contributions to the world. Tonight's focus revolves around critical necessity of nurturing climate literate and climate-focused students. The imperative to develop climate literacy aligns seamlessly with BUSD's purpose. By equipping our students with a deep understanding of climate science, environmental justice, and sustainable practices, we are preparing them to navigate and contribute positively to our rapidly changing world. As part of our department's cause, we're driving meaningful change and fostering inclusive learning environments that empower every student, whether through adult learning opportunities like our climate literacy teams or working towards universal instruction on climate science in BUSD. Climate literacy is not merely about understanding scientific concepts. It's about empowering students to engage with the complexities of our environment, recognize global interconnectiveness, and advocate for sustainable solutions. In doing so, we are not only advancing academic excellence, but also instilling a sense of agency and responsibility in Berkeley Unified School District students. As we delve into the specifics of our climate literacy work tonight, I invite our community to consider the profound impact that this work has on our students, our community, and our collective future. Through collaborative efforts across departments and with your esteemed support, we are paving the way as regional leaders in this work for our diverse student body to excel academically and emerge from BUSD as informed, engaged scholars poised to make meaningful contributions to our world.
Thank you. And I'm really excited to share some highlights of our climate literacy work this evening from this school year. But I wanted to start just with a brief overview of our timeline of climate literacy here in BUSD. So just to remember that our climate literacy resolution, which is entitled "An Educational Response to the Climate Emergency", was passed in November 2021. And it committed to graduating students who are well-versed in climate change science issues, solutions, and climate justice and environmental justice as a civil rights issue. And I think that we know, I wanna highlight really that the resolution was called "An Educational Response to the Climate Emergency" because we know as a district that now is the time to be educating our students about the world that they're living in and empowering them with the tools to address this global emergency, and particularly being well-versed not just in science and issues, but empowered with solutions and action. And this resolution was co-written by a BUSD student, and a key part of the initiative continues to include student leadership. And the goals of the resolution clearly align with BUSD's mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world. And as we go through the presentation this evening, we'll be pointing out just some highlights and connections that the resolution committed to and how that's showing up in our work this year. But just moving on with our, our timeline, in April 2022, after the resolution was passed, we surveyed staff in BUSD to learn more about what's already happening with climate literacy, what staff need, and who would like to be more involved in this work. And that helped us establish the Climate Literacy Working Group in August 2022, which has continued this year. And then, of course, this past summer, the Climate Literacy TSA position was created. And so in tonight's presentation, you know, one of the overarching goals that we're looking for this year is building a culture of climate literacy in BUSD. And so kind of looking at the big picture for the school year, just bringing awareness to the BUSD community that this is a priority and something we're actively working on as a district, and really inviting participation from the community and staff. And just thinking about that this year, presenting at staff meetings at the beginning of the school year, not all staff were aware of the resolution and of the work. And now when I present at staff meetings, everyone raises their hand that, that they're aware of the climate literacy work that we're doing in the district. So I think that really kind of shows how we're building this culture in our district. And as I will share throughout the presentation, some of this looks like growing the working group, our Climate Literacy Working Group this year, bringing in community voices through meetings with student groups, and establishing our Advisory Committee for Climate Literacy, sharing resources with staff and event showcases like what you see in this photo, which is our climate fair that just happened on April 20th, really bringing the community together around climate literacy. So I'll start by highlighting our Climate Literacy Working Group, which is a core piece of the work in climate literacy this year. And that group has been a professional learning community for teachers. So we have an elementary team, a middle school team, and a high school team, and these teams meet monthly. There's also a space for resource sharing and professional development. It's a space for teachers to plan and collaborate around climate literacy lessons, really starting to think through in teachers' subject areas and expertise, like what this work looks like. And teachers in this group have also served as site representatives, so sharing about the work and connecting with their school sites about climate literacy opportunities. And I also just wanna point out that this team is a passionate group of educators that really go above and beyond. And you know, the work that I'm gonna share in just a moment is really a reflection of, of those teachers and the work that they put in this year. So I wanna just go through our elementary, some highlights of our elementary team, middle school, and high school. So starting with elementary, one of the focuses in the working group, we had a couple themes that teachers were planning around this year. So zero waste was one of the themes, food systems, and then climate science fairs. So, so teachers could collaborate together around some of these themes. And in the photos, you'll see at Sylvia Mendez, our low-carbon cooking contest, that was a special contest after students learned about food systems and climate change. There were 30 students that participated. And it was a really joyous celebration. There's also collaboration with, with the garden program in that curriculum. You can also see, you know, you heard from our students that learned about plastic pollution, and so that was one of our waste projects this year. And at Oxford, our Climate Buddies Peer Learning between kindergartners and fifth graders, learning about food system and plant-based foods is just another example of some of the projects that happened. And this week and last week, I was actually able to visit Washington Elementary and Malcolm X, where students were engaging in climate change experiments that really demonstrated how climate change works, and then teaching those to younger students along with solutions. And that was just a really powerful peer learning activity that has shown up a lot in the elementary. That's been a theme of peer learning. I also wanna highlight that many sites participated in Earth Month activities. You can see in the photo one of our Earth Month activities from Oxford, the Climate March. And another photo highlights, you know, that there's been a lot of collaboration with the garden program, especially at the elementary level. So this is a native beneficial plants planting outside of Malcolm X Elementary. And one really nice thing about the Climate Literacy Working Group that we've noticed is we have classroom teachers, science release teachers, and garden teachers that have time to come together and collaborate in this dedicated space for collaboration. That's been really fruitful. Another thing I'd like to highlight at the elementary level is addressing AB 285, which is Climate Change in Science Instruction, California Assembly Bill that passed in October. So was that 10 minutes? Okay. And that states that next year the California Climate Change Education will happen, needs to happen in science instruction for grades one through 12. And so in preparation for that, I've been meeting with elementary school science teachers and TSA to really look at what is already in our curriculum and where we need to improve or supplement in our science curriculum to prepare for that legislation. At the middle school... Maybe? Okay, we can go to the next slide. I'm not sure what's happening. Okay, thank you. At the middle school, Level 1 success this year was at middle school collaboration, working with departments, like the math department, science, and history department. And that was something that really eliminated that we need more time for teachers to work on this during the workday and, and normal hours. The, the working group is great and teachers get paid, but that's after their working hours. And so being able to collaborate during department time was really helpful. And one project that came out of that, a couple actually are, are displayed here in the photos. In our math department, teachers were offered projects that covered their data standards. So there was a sixth-grade math project where students actually got to audit the waste on their campus and use data visualizations to communicate that to, what their findings to the school community. So at Willard and King, so that's pictured here. The working group this year really was interdisciplinary. So we had teachers from science, English, history, art, that were on that, that team, developing curriculum, and really showing that this work happens not just in science, but across across subjects. And that was displayed at the climate fair. So a few of the projects that you're seeing here are from art classes, English classes. One pictured here was the intersection of climate change and redlining, really, you know, showing the commitment to climate justice, which is .3 of the resolution. And the climate fair itself was our second annual climate fair and really brought together, you know, was mostly a middle school project. So our middle school team worked on that project. But it brought together elementary and high school as well and was just a celebration of, of this work. And we can, we also had a similar work addressing AB 285 at the middle school level as well. At the high school level, we didn't have necessarily one team that met together all the time, but smaller teams that worked on a lot of projects. And so one that I really wanna highlight is the Green Career Fair, which connects to some of the, the Green New Deal goals, especially around green job pathways. And was also something that students asked for last year at our BHS showcase, a climate showcase. And so we wanted to make that a priority. That was a collaboration with the Sustainability Department and the BHS Green Team and BHS College and Career Center. So we brought in about 15 presenters from different career fields in sustainability. And students were able to come with their classes to see those presenters. Another thing to highlight is the garden program. So BHS is one of the only sites that doesn't, is the only site that doesn't have an active garden program. And we've gotten feedback from students that we want a garden space. Our advisory committee has talked about how part of climate literacy is having a living learning lab for every site. And so this year, we've taken steps to bring a garden program to BHS. So you can see in the photo here, I think two weeks ago, our first student workday, where about 30 students came out to help transform that space. And I wish I could have all the photos of like how it was transformed, but there's just one. And then that was followed up with, in the, in the climate conference, which I'll talk about in a moment, ninth-grade workshop where ninth graders actually helped plant the garden. So building up to next year, having a community conversation about how we bring that, that, that program to BHS. A collaboration with the library was an event bringing Rebecca Solnit in conversation with three BHS students who did an incredible job interviewing Rebecca Solnit about the book Not Too Late. So it was a book about climate action and hope. And that was a community event in collaboration with Berkeley City College. And yeah, just the students did an incredible job in conversation with her. Another thing to highlight from the, the high school, there were so many things, is the U9 Climate Conference. That was really the project of a ninth-grade English teacher, Zia Grossman Vendrio, who brought in 16 presenters for students to have hands-on workshops on the, on Friday, April 19th. And before that, the week leading up to it, students learned about climate change in their subject areas in, in their hives. I think five of the seven hives participated in that. Later in the month, there'll be a climate action showcase from the biology... Later in the month, there'll be a climate action showcase from the biology department. And one other great thing about the high school was just meeting with students to hear more about what they want to see in climate literacy and green jobs. Okay. So I've got two minutes and I'll go try to get through three slides. One thing I wanted to highlight was that doing this, in this work, we've built a lot of community and district partnerships. So one partnership is with BUSD Sustainability. I really think that to achieve whole schools sustainability, you need the Sustainability Department and climate literacy working together so that students are educated about these initiatives and they're strengthened. So some of the initiatives that collaborated on this year are reusables rollout. So one of the images you see is an assembly for students to learn about the importance of reusables at Cragmont, which is one of the sites that now has all reusables instead of single use. And we've also collaborated on safe routes to school and transportation education. Of course, collaborating with the garden and cooking program, which we know is a key part of climate literacy. You could see that in the working group and also in the work in the BHS garden. We're also supported by community groups like Community Resources for Science, who support our climate literacy working group teachers, Chabot Space and Science, and Stop Waste, who have all worked with us this year to help with programming and curriculum. And the last thing I want to highlight for partnerships is that I've connected a lot with the few districts in the state who have climate literacy resolutions. And one outcome of that was our first annual Bay Area Climate Literacy Exchange. It's something I'm really proud of. And it began as a collaboration with Fremont Unified because they also have a climate literacy resolution. We wanted to get our teachers together to collaborate. And what started as an event with maybe 30 people expanded to 130 people from nine school districts across the Bay Area who heard about the work and wanted to be involved. And so we had a collaboration and PD Day at Chabot Space and Science Center. And hopefully it's the first annual and we'll have many more. But it really eliminates, I think, that BUSD not only that BUSD is really a leader in this work and that connects to point six of our resolution that says we're joining a team of educators across California in this work. And then just a few other highlights. We've established a climate literacy and sustainability newsletter to share news, updates, environmental leaders across the district and resource, teaching resources with staff each quarter. We've developed the Climate Literacy Advisory Committee, which connects to point four A of the resolution. That was something that I felt strongly about to bring in staff, parents, students, and community partners all in conversation together. And our last meeting of the year is next week and we're working on a vision statement for climate literacy program. And then I also want to highlight that we fundraised $33,000 in grants and donations this school year to support climate literacy programming for this school year and primarily for next school year. And then last, I just want to share some updates of looking forward for next year. So from what we've learned this year, we're thinking about, you know, where to head next year and how to support staff with climate literacy. One of those things is professional development offerings. So a few of those would look like climate literacy foundations, teaching about climate anxiety with students, knowing that that's something that comes up in the classroom and an introduction to climate justice and environmental justice, which really ties to point three of the resolution. We also want to start mapping out our curriculum and seeing where we're having successes and where we need to supplement the curriculum, but also to just map out what climate literacy concepts we want students to learn from K through 12, because we know what climate literacy looks like at kindergarten is very different from what it looks like in high school. And because this work is so new, there aren't a lot of guides for what that looks like. So bringing together a team of teachers to decide what that looks like and figure out where we have holes in our curriculum that we need to fill. And then last, to keep things hands-on and active, part of our working group will work on climate action projects next year that tie into some of our sustainability goals. So two of those themes will be waste. So how can we learn about waste? And then also engage students in projects on their campus where they can advocate or improve systems. And then the other will be around green schoolyards. So that's something I'm excited about for next year. And I think that's probably been my 10 minutes. So thank you all for listening.
Thank you so much, Ms. McClure. I'm excited to hear about best, sharing best practices with other districts. Very great work. And for colleagues, if you have any questions, I see Director Shunovsky, Nino, and Director Babett.
Yeah, just two quick things. First of all, before my two quick things, thank you so much for all of this work and really meaningful work. The first thing I wondered is I see for your projects, you have waste. And I'm wondering if we have some plans to incorporate some of the zero waste breakfast ideas that were brought to us by the Thousand Oaks Classroom. At the, I think it was the last board meeting. So I'm hoping that that is going to be part of it.
Yeah, definitely. And that project, I think, is a really great example of expanding these climate action projects for next year and using that as an example of how students can, you know, practice their academic skills by advocating and learning about climate literacy at the same time. Yeah.
And then hopefully making the change as well.
Yes, as much as we can support it.
Yeah, great. Yeah. And then I just also wanted to comment, I know we've had students who have brought us a Green New Deal resolution, which I think just augments this work and includes some of this work as part of what students are asking for. So I look forward to engaging in that so that we can expand on this work in some meaningful ways as well. So thanks.
Thank you, Director Babett.
Thank you. I just want to say how much pride this gives me as one who helped to author and co-write this climate literacy resolution to work with people and have a vision and then see it implemented so well and so quickly is really speaks to the dynamics and the power of the work that you all have done. So thank you for that. And then I also want to say around the climate literacy fair, that it was really a whole thing in my house. Like we had to compete around who was going to get to go. And this was just the second year. And so from the first year, everybody wanted to go back. So I got stuck grand babysitting. I don't know if that's really stuck, but I went ahead and did the babysitting, but was so excited to see the pictures and to see all the learning and to see them all come home so excited about just that that one act of the climate fair and to see the growth with the Berkeley High School, because I was there last year and now to see it. So this is just really great work and that's really all I want to say. And I'm just so proud of this update and that and all that you all are doing to make this a reality.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Anyone else have any comments? No, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Colleagues, I'm going to ask for a five-minute break before we get to our next item and we'll give staff a chance to sit up. All right, directors, looks like our presenters are ready. So we're going to get started soon. All right, I see Coram, Director Shunovsky, and then we're reading for Vice President Brown. I think she'll be coming shortly. Right, thank you very much to our presenters. And Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dick, will you be introducing this item?
I most certainly will. Thank you, President Vasudeva.
All right, I think your mic is off.
Is it off? But can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. All right, good evening again. I am here with a different segment of our Ed Services team and we are here to share. I am here with a different segment of our Ed Services team, and we are here to share a brief presentation about Compliance and Improvement Monitoring for Significant Disproportionality, otherwise known as SIM for SIGDIS. You will notice an asterisk here because the state is making a name change to what had been formally known as Comprehensive Coordinated Early Intervening Services, or CCSEs. So we are going to now be using the terminology of SIM for SIGDIS. Next slide, thank you. Related to our district's mission to enable and inspire our diverse student body to achieve academic excellence and make positive contributions to the world, we also have a SIM for SIGDIS mission, which includes transforming the conditions in BOSD that are currently contributing to the significant disproportionality in the representation of Black and African-American students in special education, other health impairment, specific learning disability, and intellectual disability. And the SIM SIGDIS process, although the name has changed, the process remains the same. It involves a four-step process of reviewing our, of gathering and inquiring, looking at data to inform a root cause analysis, and then identifying actions toward a plan for improvement, and then implementing that. For tonight's presentation, I'm sorry, I do not know if it's me that's providing that feedback. For tonight's presentation, this, we're... Does that work? Testing? Okay. Tonight's presentation, we're gonna share a brief overview of SIM for SIGDIS, just so that we're all on the same page. We are gonna review our ongoing SIM for SIGDIS progress, sharing a few highlights and some growth opportunities and areas for next work, and we are gonna preview the development of a 2024 plan. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Carla.
Good evening. My name is Carla Gaden, and I am the CCSE coordinator. And just wanting to thank Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke for giving us an overview, wanting to build on that, to just ground us in our root causes. So the slide that you see here would be the root cause summary, and just wanting to uplift that the summary is really just an overview, really, about the root causes. The actual language of the root causes, we don't want to miss, just wanting to make sure that we say that, because our stakeholders, our ed partners, definitely put a lot of thought and input after looking at qualitative and quantitative data to be able to come up with the root causes. And so with that, just wanting to uplift, the root causes are really focused on our Black and African-American students, so that we can inform systemic change. And those root causes are rooted in implicit and explicit biases, the lack of authentic trusting relationships with our Black students, looking at culturally responsive tier-one core instruction and curricula, really stratifying our data systems, and thinking about the absence of a clearly defined MTSS system and work that we can think about implementing consistently, and then really honing in on the institutionalized racism that is upholding some structures of tracking and isolation for Black and African-American students. You will find on the link that says click here, the focus group data and presentation that was presented at our Ed Partners Meeting, as well as at our CCSE summits, our SIM for SIGDIS summits, to give kind of a background on how that came to be. Next slide. And so just wanting to highlight that with the root causes, we are looking to make actionable steps to remediate the root causes and to address them. So that's why you'll notice that we have measurable outcomes, and the four that are listed there are looking to have implementation through September 2025, and they are grounded in academics, attendance, improving attendance, and looking at chronic absenteeism, as well as our behavior and social emotional learning. As we know, that discipline is a gateway to special education, so that is definitely highlighted there, as well as our cultural affirmation and sense of belonging. And I will pass it next to Sean.
So this slide, I'm Sean Manser, you're the Executive Director of Special Education. This slide really just lays out who our students are. So you can see from that first column, our long-fellowed students, we have Malcolm X, Washington Elementary, John Muir Elementary, Oxford Elementary, and Berkeley Technology Academy, BTA. And these are sites that we've chosen as vision sites, and we do have some criteria for that. For example, enrollment, we need to at least have nineteen percent of students identified as Black African-American behavior, meaning they have to receive at least one in-school or out-of-school suspension, or two-plus office referrals. Academics meet indicators for EOLA or math tier-two and tier-three interventions on benchmarks like DIBELS and STAR. And then attendance, considered chronically absent, ten percent plus absences. So these, we at least need to have two of those criteria in order to identify as a vision scholar. You can see on the right there that we have the percentage of our students, even though our Black African-American students are the focus, what we've, it doesn't, it, the plan still allows us to work with other students. Our Hispanic Latinx students are second in line in being over-identified for special education, but we're not at quite at the levels that the federal government is monitoring for us, but we want to make sure that those students are being served, so we don't get into that, into that place.
All right, thank you. So just kind of looking at the process here, we get root causes that we're addressing, we target them with measurable outcomes and actions, and then we have our target group, our vision scholars that we're working with to remediate some of those goals. And so with that, I just wanted to highlight some of the current work that we are doing with our vision scholars, and I'll do that by measurable outcome. So for measurable outcome one, which would be our academics, we currently have an FTE for what we call the Vision School Program Coordinators at each vision school, and so we work and have been training them consistently this year with monthly meetings to look at how we can support them in working with the individual vision scholars with data-driven goal and purposes for their individual learning plan. So each vision scholar has an individualized learning plan, and we've been looking at this year specifically how to work with our vision school program coordinators, who are primarily our RTI team members and teachers at the vision schools, to be able to provide that individualized support. And we've been looking at really how to focus in on making smart egos for those vision scholars. And of course, we're doing a lot of MTSS guidance work and collaboration with the Literacy Action Implementation Team. And then for chronic absenteeism, we have partnership and work collectively with the Student Services Department, and one of the platforms this year that we've really looked at to think about chronic absenteeism data is the Everyday Pro platform. And so we've really drilled down to look at some of those data points for where our vision scholars are coming in in terms of their chronic absenteeism, and also exploring that with sites and the vision school program coordinators and principals. We know that there are definitely a lot of attendance campaigns that are happening, that have happened this school year, and we're really excited about that collaboration and what the data is helping us understand about how we can get kids to school and have some incentives for them to be there as well, and then also partnering to learn about the family communications as a part of that. And then just thinking about the behavior, the SEL component as well, we are really standardizing those practices for our cost team and our SST team. And working also, we conducted a case study file review to really understand the pathways of our students who have been identified in specific learning disability and other health impairment, and understanding their journeys into special education and throughout their matriculation through the K-12 experience. And so we're really honing in on that data to be able to get more information about next steps and interventions. And then lastly, for measurable outcome number four, we have made an intentional effort to review our SIPSES with our vision school teams. And also, we mentioned in the last, I think it was two weeks ago, in the preview, we previewed the African-American Success Framework Implementation Team alignment work with CCSEs, and how some of those events have taken place this year in our partnership there, and how we're looking to continue to build, as well as some of the culturally, linguistically responsive inclusive practices workshops that have happened for many of our staff, including our school psychologists and our equity teacher leaders.
All right, so the, the good news is that we are seeing progress. The, the CCSE's timeline shows us where we were in 2021, where we were significantly disproportionate across three different categories: intellectual disabilities, other health impairments, and specific learning disability. And by the 2023 plan this last year, we were identi, no longer identified for other health impairment, and then this year, in the current designation, we were no longer identified for intellectual disability. So at this point, we are currently significantly disproportionate only in specific learning disability, which is certainly the direction that we want ahead, and this is a particularly critical designation because we recognize the importance of tier-one literacy instruction on students that have been identified for specific learning disability, and how important it'll be to prevent over-identification there. As we, part of the monitoring process is to maintain progress, or monitor progress towards our measurable outcomes. So in terms of measurable outcome one, our, our goals are to look to see if our vision scholars are making significant or accelerated progress, in particular in literacy, because that's where our resources as a district are being focused, and we are seeing, at least in terms of our STAR reading throughout this school year, significant increases outpacing non-vision scholars, which is promising, and that's part of the, part of the measurable outcome. We recognize that we want to continue to be thoughtful about the range of different metrics we can use, so we're actually exploring this use of MAP, the MAP reading test, especially for our secondary students as another metric. We also want to pay attention to math, although that's not been our focus district-wide. It is certainly an area of need, and we're not seeing the same progress for vision scholars in math as we are for literacy. Part of the other piece is that while we have been focused this year and last year on completion of the individualized learning plans, which is a central part of the vision scholar program, and our completion rate is around eighty percent from the first ILP up from last year, the next step is actually to work on quality. And so we've developed a tool and, and are working in those regular meetings with our vision scholar program coordinators to improve the quality of our plans, our goals, and our, our interventions. When it comes to chronic absenteeism, we've seen a significant change again, decreasing our chronic absenteeism for all vision scholars, as well as for African-American vision scholars, although not at the, as high of a rate as the rest of the group. Part of our next steps there is to look for trends in, through barrier analysis, that our Everyday Pro platform allows us to do, to see what are some of the root causes of absenteeism, to, to best pair them with interventions for attendance, and then creating those shared resources that are matched to each of those specific barriers, so that schools across the district will have, be able to identify. Although every case is unique, there are some common trends, and they'll have a bank of resources that they can leverage when some of those common reasons are popping up. And then finally, for measurable outcome three and four, we have seen a reduction in our suspensions. We haven't had a large suspension rate to begin with, but we did see, this is the same cohort of students last year, where, for example, six of our vision scholars were suspended with a total of thirteen incidents. This year, only two students of our vision scholars have been suspended for a total of two incidents. You can see the decrease also specifically for Black African-American vision scholars. We've also increased opportunities and participation in our African-American Success Framework Family Events. Those are events that are, were part of the African-American Success Framework broadly, but we have this year done targeted and specific outreach on all of our vision scholars in this process, and seen not only increased the number of events, but also a number of attendees. We recognize, though, that there are, there's work to do. For one, we're still refining our collection of office referral data, which is a critical precursor to any suspension work. And we have also conducted a really powerful case study file review for students that have been identified for other health impairment and special, specific learning disabilities to understand their pathway to that designation and all the things that happened before that. So now we are reviewing the results and implications of that, and how that might play into the ways in which behavior is a critical factor in those identifications. And then finally, we're standardizing some of our processes for our cost teams and our SST, that's a collaborative goal, including the leadership of our Director for Brea, Ruth, as well as our Director of Schools, Debbie Dean, our principals, our RTI specialists, all contributing to that. Again, those are infrastructure pieces that are critical for this to happen and put one of the root causes. And then for belonging and cultural affirmation, we know we need to, we're, initially, we thought we might be able to use the data from the California Healthy Kids Survey, but as the format that it comes in, being anonymous and not being across every grade level, we are in the process of developing our own instruments to create, to collect some baseline data that we think will not only benefit, be important for CCSEs or SIM for SIGDIS plan, but also help us monitor across our SIPSES, our family and community engagement plans, our LCAPS, and be a great data point broadly. And we know our focus has been on transition plans for our vision scholars from, from one school to the next to continue their focus support, and we want to be, we're gonna be thoughtful about that as we transition into the next school year.
And just to wrap up, I want to acknowledge the work not only of this team, but also the synergies that we've had with the African-American Success Framework work, our Literacy Action Plan work, so there's been a lot of cross-coordination to get us to this place. On the last slide, we just want to, we wanted to be able to provide a quick update here because we will be developing the 2024 plan, which will come to the board for approval, and we will have our last educational partner meeting of the year on May 21st. You are invited to come. Dr. Mary Bacon will be sharing a report out of the file review. With that, we'll take questions.
Thank you so much, colleagues. Do we have any questions? I have Director Babett, and then Director Shinnowski.
Thank you. I noticed in the root causes, I don't know if you've rephrased it or if this has changed, but it used to be one of the root causes was a lack of political will to address systemic racism and many of the barriers to success, such as implicit bias and disciplinary issues that are leading towards students being over-identified. Can you tell me how that has changed?
Those have, those, that has not changed. That language is there. This is just the short version. If you go to the link, you'll see the longer text there. We, we just, we consolidated it for the slide for space so we could see it.
Okay. Well, my hope was that the lack of political will had changed because...
No, we're still, we're still working with the current set of root clauses. We will be able to, to consider that as we do the 2024 plan.
Do you... Okay. And then can you, I noticed a lot of the African-American Success Framework actions have been tying into the CCSEs plan as we hoped it would and designed it to. Can you just kind of elaborate more on how that collaboration has helped to be successful, specifically with our vision schools and our overall goals, and hopefully in changing that lack of political will?
That's right, yeah. One of the, the biggest ahas, I think, in the implementation, especially the last school year, was how many wheels were spinning in multiple directions when really there are some common goals, and our African-American Success Framework is setting the groundwork for, the broader groundwork is really the umbrella work for us to be able to... for us to be able to address the inequities and the significant disproportionality affecting our Black and African-American students. And so this year, being really thoughtful, in particular, about how we are aligning that work, partnering with our African-American Success Framework facilitation team across bringing in a lot of different departments and broadening the collaboration across our vision school network, which we call them, which was, used to be two different groups, our CSIS group and our African-American Success group. And now it's one group. In that partnership, all of those pieces are, have been critical. And certainly Carla has been leading a lot of work to be really thoughtful about where are there action items that overlap. And as Jill mentioned, not just with the African-American Success Framework, but with a lot of our initiatives that are impacting our Black students disproportionately.
If I may add, this idea of political will, it doesn't mean there's not a lot of people working really hard on this. I just think until we see systemic change from our whole system, then that, you know, political will likely be a section of these root causes at some point. So when we get to the point where we feel good and the opportunity gap is closed even further, then, you know, then we can have a discussion about that for our root causes.
And we'll definitely have that conversation as we're developing the 2024 plan by looking at the data and doing more qualitative focus with a lot of the families as well as students and having more, you know, data to review as a part of looking at those root causes and if they're still relevant for this upcoming plan.
I'm Director Shenoski, and then Vice President Brown.
Thank you so much. So I have a question on Slide nine, if we can, do you mind if you put it up? So just on the data, I'm just wondering, so one of them said a 4.9% increase in the, in all vision scholars who were reading assessment. And then I wondered, yeah, so looking at the vision scholars versus the non-vision scholars, that 4.9 versus the 3.2. So I'm just wondering if it is a statistically significant increase because I know it's a small number of vision scholars. So, and I'm just asking because I think it's important for us when we're highlighting the positives to make sure that we understand if it really is a positive and if the interventions or the changes that we're doing are making a difference. So that's my first question. And also on this slide, the chronic absenteeism, there's just not a reference for the non-vision scholars. So I wondered if we know what that number is, just as a reference point, so similar kind of thing.
Yeah, so for the chronic absenteeism, if Dr. Shelley does have a sense of how our chronic absenteeism district-wide is happening, certainly it's decreased. As a matter of fact, we were in, what is it called? The differentiated assistance for it, and we are no longer in that district-wide. But I believe Dr. Shelley will be able to share a little bit about the difference that we're seeing in the vision scholar schools specifically. But real quick, just to the point of the STAR data. So we're looking, that's based on average composite scores to see from beginning of the year to end of the year, what is the rate of impact. It is a significant amount. What were, the overall rate of, or overall scores for non-vision scholars are much higher, but that's because our vision scholars are identified mostly because they are scoring lower in literacy to begin with. And so what we're looking for is closing that gap with an accelerated rate. And so since they are outpacing at a significant rate, that is something that we're monitoring. However, each test is so different in terms of the way the scores are reported. So one of the things that will come up with the 2022, 24 plan is in the measurable outcome right now, it's just kind of a blanket 10% increase because we're kind of guessing when we didn't, we were still kind of early in implementing all of these new benchmark assessments. And now it might be looking for a percentage increase versus, that is, might vary depending on the assessment.
And then another thing to look at then, that your answer prompted me to think of is that it would be interesting to see what the increase from fall to spring for non-vision scholars who had those low assessments initially, right? Rather than just all scholars. Again, I'm just trying to see if we understand what's making a difference. You know, that's why. And then my other last question is about OFEE, actually. So we know that our OFEE staff is beloved, and they are very connected to our families. They're also in the audience. But I'm just wondering how we're integrating the work of our, you know, site-based OFEE staff into this particular work.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to do Dr. Shelley first?
Oh, yeah. Maybe let's have Dr. Shelley.
Okay, so Dr. Shelley can answer that attendance question really quickly, and then we'll have Ms. Lydia answer the OFEE question.
Okay, just real quickly then. The, the changes across our vision schools is similar in line to the decreases that we've seen across the entire vision schools. All of the vision schools have seen decreases in the chronic absenteeism rate from last year. And those, those ranges ranged from, you know, 4% to 5% decrease to 7% to 8% decrease. And part of the focus has been on those Tier One supports for all students, which has impacted the attendance. So those, for those students who would be in Tier Two moving down to Tier One, those in Tier Three moving down to Tier Two. And so there's been a lot of targeted outreach to the, to the families of the vision scholars through our communication platform and our partnership with Everyday Labs to show those reductions. I can get more numbers for you for the entire district as well as for the vision schools specifically.
We can send that in Friday notes.
Yeah, I can do that.
I'm to address the OFEE question. The family engagement specialists at the vision schools have, have the lists of all the different vision scholars and are connected to their families. They make phone calls to all the families and are connected with their individual learning plans. And they also join the professional development sessions that we have for our vision scholars and work really closely with their families in order to make sure they're integrated and are connected with their, their individual learning plans.
Hey, Vice President Brown.
Yes, good evening. Thank you all so much for your presentation. I am really happy and excited to hear that we are trending in the positive. I know that when this first was brought to the district or even before then, we were in a pretty bad space with over-identification of our Black and African-American students in special education, so much so that there's a lot of public record out there about it. And so I'm very grateful to hear that we are trending in the positive for this. I wanted to ask a question around the reduction of, or the, yeah, the reduction in suspensions for our vision schools that you alluded to, Director Espinosa. And I wanted to know specifically, what are the bright spots that kind of helped us to get there? More so thinking about, is it that there has been a reduction in, or decrease rather, in suspendable behaviors? Or have we adopted more restorative practices in our schools? And so if you could take the time to answer that.
Right, and I can share one major thing, which is the work that's happening specifically at Longfellow as well as at BTA. Longfellow, what, last year in terms of our vision schools was the, had the highest number of our suspensions. One of the things that happened this year was an emphasis, not only does the individualized learning plan allow for some proactive work, both to build relationships, to set some behavior goals for all of our students, and, and set up some interventions before, ideally before they're needed from the beginning of the school year. But also Longfellow, as part of their kind of design of their kind of equity approach to this work, has identified, connected each of the vision scholars with an individual mentor across the campus. So every single staff member is connected to a vision, one vision scholar and doing follow-up and check-in. And so when it comes to seeing the impact on behavior, we think that's one of the main reasons for that is that both proactive work and goal-setting, but also the regular check-in and the connection with, with a supportive adult.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Next, I wanted to ask, Jennifer stole my question about family communication and the role of OFEE, but if there's any other light that you can share on how communication has just helped to increase our ability to move in the positive. If there's anything that you didn't get to share, please feel free to share it down so I can feel like it's still my question to ask.
Well, I didn't get a chance to ask questions. But maybe I'll take it on one in the next.
One thing that I will mention is that we've been working with Kristi with the summer school program to create a webinar to support our vision scholars and their families with signing up for summer school. And that's actually scheduled for this coming Tuesday, May 7th. And so this is like really just very specific to our vision scholars and their families and making sure that they have access to the resources and the summer opportunities that other students also have and making sure that they're also able to enroll in summer school and have their questions answered. And this is only able to be done with like direct outreach to the vision scholars and their families.
Thank you for sharing that. That's great to hear. As we know, summer school is a major opportunity for our students to, to not just relearn maybe what was lost or not learned during the school time, but to also step up and prepare for next academic year. So thank you for that. And then finally, I don't want to stay too long on the political will conversation, but I am interested to know what codes of behavior are we adopting within our, within our staff that will continue to help with the reduction of over-identification of Black and African-American students in special education? And when I say the over-identification, I mean the unnecessary over-identification. And I'm sure you all know that, but just for the record, making the differentiation between behaviors and what's culturally appropriate and what is it, what is, is not accessible to students in the classroom and so on and so forth.
I'll speak to one aspect of that, and that would be our school psychologists. So our school psychologists are often, you know, hold the space between, and they do testing with students, and they meet with IEP teams and, and have conversations and work closely with the case managers around their, you know, their performance. So one thing we've done this year is our school psychologist had a Black psychologist come and do a couple of different PDs with them. And say, thank you, Dr. Leah Holman.
Oh, yeah.
And then we actually, they, this year, this whole year, they've been doing a book study with culturally the responsive teaching in the brain, Soretta Hammond. So, and they're going to be continuing that work next year. And the reason why that's important is the psychologist sits on the cost teams. Since we have increased our AT in the district with our school psychologists, we're able to do, they're also doing counseling with students. We have some work that's happening where there's counseling happening with students that don't have IEPs yet in order to avoid them having IEPs later on potentially. So there's a lot of work on that end. And then we did our work with Dr. Sahili with his six sessions that we did. But, you know, we recognize also that there needs to be more work done across our district to ensure that these conversations are regular at our school sites, especially when we're looking at data at school sites that we're naming the students we're not serving and what are the behaviors that we're going to change in order to serve them better.
Thank you. Thank you, colleagues. Are there any further questions? Director Chee.
I'll make this quick. Thank you so much. Very pleased to hear of some of the improvements. Following up on measurable outcome three from the Vice President's questions, with regard to the reduced vision scholar suspensions, what are some of the district's plans to scale up and scale up the strategies that were utilized at the vision, with the vision scholars to reduce existing race disparities based upon suspensions district-wide? Thank you.
Being, one of the core things, as you know, of, that, that drives the design of our CSIS SIM for SIGDIS vision scholar program work is the idea that we have these, these, these individual schools that are doing some really, trying to do some cutting edge or leading the, the work that could inform the rest of the school district. And so as, as such, part of it is to provide forums. And I believe that we've shared with you in the next couple of weeks, we'll be having an Equity Symposium, which is one of those forums where our vision schools are able to share some of the highlights, some of the things that worked, some of the things that didn't work and the, and through a really thoughtful learning lens as we can consider what we can bring to other schools as well as to share district-wide. And that's another reason why folks like Dr. Shelley are key parts of our CSIS or SIM for SIGDIS work and thinking about, in his work with the Vice Principals and with other groups where there might be more connections to be made in terms of what's making that impact. Yeah, if Dr. Shelley wants to add anything.
Oh, yeah, so, and really, a lot of the work is in working with the administration on looking at alternatives to suspension interventions. Again, it's a lot of work around Tier One, and then as you progress into Tier Two. But really, it's about looking at alternative suspension, restorative practices, and also corrective measures that you take with students.
Thank you.
Director Rabbit.
And just one other data point I think would be helpful is when, when the number of repeat suspensions for the same individuals versus is the overall number for other individuals as well going down.
Great. Did you want a response to that or any?
No, I'm just saying in general, like in the future, we could have that kind of data included in these presentations. It would be helpful.
Great. Thank you, Director Rabbit. All right, well, thank you so much for the presentation and hope you have a great rest of your evening for not here for the next item. And Associate Superintendent, I think you're introducing the next item, right? 14.1.
I am.
And then before we move on to that, colleagues, shall we move to extend the meeting till 11:15?
We'll wait till you expose me to 11:00. Can we wait till you expose me?
Sure, we'll wait, yeah, we'll wait until we're done with this presentation.
All right, so good evening. I'm here to present the action item on a proposal to use, to use the Local Control Funding Formula General Fund Reserve for one-time expenditure. As always, we're going to ground that in our district's mission. And as you've seen in some of our budget presentations before, we really are trying to anchor our budget and resource decisions in our district's mission, recognizing that we are in a challenging budget year with the budget reductions that we need to make. And so, you know, that's all part of the context for this presentation. Didn't realize I have the clicker now. Okay. And do you want to anchor this conversation in the incongruent timeline that we are dealing with? Um, we, uh, this action item, along with the act, action item that follows it. Uh, there's a final notice of layoff, a statutory requirement that those, um, happen by May fifteenth. Um, we are anticipating in the next couple of weeks that we'll hear from the governor about the May revise, um, which would be any adjustments on projections for the budget for next year. At the end of the month, we will have our L cap and budget public hearing. Um, June 12th is the last board meeting of the year where we will have L cap and budget final approval. Um, after that meeting sometime around June 21st, the governor will release the final budget. I think that was the date that, uh, we confirmed. And then all through this process, we're also doing strategic plan development. So we're trying to navigate some, um, unique, a, a unique situation in a challenging budget year. Um, we have L cap supplemental budget, um, as you heard, uh, earlier from, uh, the presentation, um, from our, from Ms. Natasha, our PAC representative. Uh, this is just an overview of the expenditures on the L cap supplemental budget. Um, almost entirely, uh, that budget is on, on the staff members that you see here. So we have a projected L cap supplemental, uh, expenses of about five point eight million dollars. Um, but going into, to next year, we have a projected supplemental budget of five point six. So there's a difference there of about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Additionally, in the twenty-three, twenty-four L cap, we used carryover, um, to support, um, some additional L cap actions. And those are the ones that you see bullet pointed here. Um, the red ones really came out of our advisory recommendations. And so while we want to hold all of that together, we recognize that the, the, the difference between a projected budget and projected expenses, in addition to the additional services that we were providing on this year's L cap. Uh, that totaled about a hundred, uh, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And we know that we don't have the capacity to be able to support that. Um, along with trying to navigate a budget target of seven point one million dollars, we've been trying to navigate this target as well in our, in our general fund. Uh, we have identified some alternative funding sources for some of those items that are currently on the L cap, which you can see here. Um, so about three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, which is leaving us a gap of four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, at the same time, uh, new, this was new learning for me, um, uh, not because we have any legal obligation or requirement as a component of our existing board policy zero four six zero under the local control accountability plan. We have a provision, um, regarding an L cap reserve, um, and that reserve fund is an LCFF general fund reserve that can be expended if there's projected year-over-year decline. So you can see that year-over-year decline has been happening since twenty-one, twenty-two, um, where we had six point two million dollars and now we've got a projected, um, uh, budget of five point six. That board policy also indicates that we, um, might designate the use of that LCFF fund reserve to be spent on one-time actions or services that are listed as increasing or improving services for unduplicated students, which are those actions that we've identified in the supplemental, um, in those supplemental funds. So, um, yeah. Uh, yep. So that the reserve set aside is equal to a million dollars, which is what we have now. Um, and what we are coming to you today for discussion and action is the approval of the use of the LCFF, LCFF general fund reserve in an amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars in one-time expenditure. We do recognize that what we're asking for is expenditure for staffing on one-time funds, which is not an ideal situation, but it would provide a bridge into the next year. Um, and we were really looking, we recognized too with the L cap development, we, we did get the, um, last, at the end of last week, we got the recommendations from PAC and we are anticipating getting the D lack recommendations within the next few days. And we're going to be using that to, um, help us, uh, finalize and formulate the draft L cap. Um, but we would like to be able to preserve those expenses that are on our L cap um, and recognize that there are some considerations that need to be part of this discussion. Um, in order to keep the current L cap supplemental expenditures full for the coming year, um, we would need to identify additional funds and the LCFF reserve could potentially be that funding source to use that. Um, the other consideration is that we don't yet have a twenty-four, twenty-seven L cap that has been approved. Um, and while we would be adopting a new three-year L cap, um, we do, we rec, we want folks to recognize that those L cap actions can be updated and are revised in any annual update. So just because we name them in a three-year plan, we can, for any number of reasons, decide to amend or the language we've been using is adopt, adapt, or abandon, which could be inclusive of any form of budget reductions. So with that, I'll take questions.
Thank you. I see, um, Vice President Brown soon. Uh, thank you, uh, Associate Superintendent, uh, Hogan Dyke. I, I do have a couple of questions. Um, before I begin, I just would like to, um, I identify that it does not, uh, really feel good to spend, um, LCFF funds on staffing. Um, and e- e- even though this is, um, incredibly important and the, and the positions are, are really important, I just want to put on the record that it doesn't feel good, um, to, to do that, especially because the money wasn't intended uh, for that specific purpose. And so to help me get to there, um, can you identify or help us understand, um, the ways in which some of these positions, and maybe you can only share two or three. I already know which ones you'll probably share in my mind, but the ways in which this will help us get to the intended purpose or goal of, uh, these funds.
Uh, so are you asking for me to, uh, make a connection with the existing funded positions and the current goals? I just want to make sure I understand that can, that question. Yep. Okay. Um, well, we have a, a number of positions and so I'm going to name a couple of them. So in a, in addition, uh, to our Ophi staff, which provides, uh, services and supports to our families, which you've heard tonight. Um, the L cap supplemental fund also, um, uh, supports our ELD TSAs, um, which provide designated ELD and coaching and support for teachers specific for our English language learners. Um, we have, uh, the support in part RJ coordinators at the middle school and high school, um, which are intended to address, um, what is our current L cap goal number three, uh, around, um, actions that support wellness and below, wellness and belonging and, uh, safe and welcoming school climate. Um, we also, uh, support a McKinney Vento counselor, which helps, um, deliver services and connect our families experiencing housing insecurity, um, with resources that they might need to help to navigate with the school system and life. Those are a couple of them.
Thank you. And, um, in doing this, can you talk about, uh, the total that will be left in the reserve?
Um, so the recommended action is to use up to, but not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars. So that would automatically, you know, if, if approved in that way, would automatically leave half of that in reserve. Um, so that would be the Mac, that would be the, the minimum if we didn't use all of it.
Okay. And, um, knowing that we, um, because we're in a financially, um, a, a year of some pretty incredible cuts. Um, I am nervous a little bit because we are already, uh, reducing our contribution to Fund Twenty. And so I worry about, uh, the financial future of the district to be able to, um, to, to put money in reserve and to keep money in reserves, um, for when we may potentially use them again. And I know that isn't a question, but that is a statement that I would just like to put out there. Um, and then finally, um, finally, I, I want to also, um, alert the board or understand how, what happens when we're in this position again next year. And so we know that this is hap, some of this is happening due to funding, the reduction of it, um, from the state due to the reduction of, um, grants that we were getting from the state. Like all of this is happening, um, all at one time. And so I worry about the, um, our ability to be fiscally sound, um, in the future. And so I don't know if that is a, a, a question for you or Associate Superintendent Fallinsby, um, but I do want to just kind of a, a, alert my board colleagues, and I'm sure they have probably similar questions. Uh, but I, I would like to know your thoughts on that, um, and not just thinking about this year, but thinking about next year and years moving forward.
Right. So I could, um, respond to that. So some of the, um, things that we're thinking about, because this is an unusual year. And we're actually talking about twenty-four, twenty-five. We're thinking about using one-time savings, if you will, if it were from Fund Twenty. So that was one of the things that the board, uh, approved, um, when we came to for the six point nine million dollars. This is another approach because we are pretty much in bear fiscal, um, situation. So, um, using a reserve, um, in a fiscal emergency is prudent. It's one time. But it is, I think, an option instead of making budget reductions to staff. If we could use, um, our reserve or savings account on a one-time basis. So.
Thank you. I, I understand and, and agree with you. Um, I, I, I do want us to put our heads together and to think about the future. If this happens to come up in the next budgeting season again next year, what is it that we are going to, um, to do other than making, making cuts? Is, I guess, is the only thing that we would be able to do. And so, um, how much harder is it going to be to make those cuts next year? Uh, knowing that we may be in a deficit. And so.
Right. So I think, um, having a year to kind of look at our operations and to look at our programs in more detail. I think we'll be able to gain efficiencies somewhat, um, from looking at our programs as based on the benefit of having, um, another year to evaluate. So we'll give ourselves some time to take a deeper dive and to hopefully, hopefully come up with ongoing budget solutions as opposed to one-time budget solutions. So.
Thank you. Thank you both. Colleagues, are there any additional questions?
Yeah.
Director Rabbit.
Thank you. I just want to, can you further clarify in this memo? It says, um, towards the last two lines of, of our policy. And I do would also say that policy zero four six zero was put into place because we could forecast based on the cost of living that our number of unduplicated students would be leaving B U S D, um, to move to other places where it's more affordable to live. And so this reserve was really set up to, to make sure that when that happened, we didn't use it to supplant general fund spending, but we did use it to make sure that those, um, services to our unduplicated students were able to, to live. And so we're kind of jumping into that reserve before our numbers have truly, um, I would say declined based on the L cap supplemental funding and its own deficit. Um, so I, I just want to acknowledge that this is kind of using it outside of the intent of the policy. And then I also want to say that, um, this last sentence says, these funds should not be used to satisfy the requirement of L cap increase or improve services for unduplicated pupils for the M P P, but may be used to increase or improve services for unduplicated pupils beyond the M P P, while not required by law or regulation. So I'm trying to figure out how this move of the reserve is going to help us go beyond the M P P, uh, when really we're basically supplanting from the general fund.
Um, so I guess what I would say that, uh, that we have been using that supplemental, those supplemental, sorry, fund expenditures, um, to support a set of actions. So this wouldn't, this wouldn't be increasing those services, but would be able, but it would be allowing us to maintain those services.
So does it fit within the policy or, or no? Because the policy says it may go beyond.
Well, the, the policy, I mean, as I'm reading it, the funds that the Sorry, I'm trying to, uh, so again.
So, um, I could, I could probably, um, jump in. So, um, the, the use of these funds will actually be um, in accordance with the use of our L cap. Um, our, our L cap provisions. So we're not saying that we're going to be using it for general fund expenses. These were expenses that actually lived in the L cap. And without going into the reserve, we would actually be, um, will be reducing the services that are offered to our, um, specialized students. So, um, the, whereas, um, the U P P has fallen in recent years. Um, the, what's driving this is actually the reduction of the COLA. Cause, um, our supplemental funding was actually impacted by that as well.
And then, um, just to follow up on that point, uh, my understanding is that by using these funds, we'll be able to maintain, uh, services that would keep us in compliance, for example, like ELD services, right? So if you don't use them, then what, then what happens? Well, I think, you know, again, we have a, we have a pot of funds and we would need to prioritize those services to our English language learners. It was what we were able to cover with that carryover. Um, if we didn't have them, that meant, that would mean that we would need to deprioritize other services, which is why on this next item, you see a reduction. I mean, there's a, there's a lot of overlapping factors here, but because of the timeline with the layoff notice, um, what is on the next item would be to, uh, to, uh, issue layoff notices for four point nine four F T E for the Ophi staff, um, which, you know, is not necessarily something that, you know, again, I think we are all committed, particularly on this Labor Day, um, to acknowledge the hard work that all of our staff members want to do. Um, but without having any final decisions and then there's some moving budget targets that we've been navigating both within, uh, the general fund as well as some of our restricted resources. Um, we would want, we would need that flexibility to, um, be able to make those harder decisions. And I'm going to move to, I saw Director Shnaski, I know you had a question, Jim, um, and then Vice President Brown. And then we should call for a motion soon or so we can extend the meeting. Vice President Brown.
You don't have any comment?
No, she said no.
Um, thank you. Uh, so that's a, a perfect segue into my question to, uh, Associate Superintendent Hogan Dyke. So I, I completely hear what you're saying and, and, um, align with what you're saying. And I'm, and so what I'm wondering though is, is because that puts us in a difficult situation, right? And it puts us in, um, a situation where we have to then go into our next item um, and do whatever it is that the board, the will of the board will be on that one. But it's almost coming to us with, um, like one solution or one resolution to this, uh, versus giving us, um, multiple, um, things to, to discover and identify. For example, um, coming to us with a potential two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, um, reduction or borrowing rather from the L cap reserve and, um, cuts that will come along with that. What this does is just allows us to take that five hundred thousand dollar price tag or reduction rather from the reserves and not entertain any cuts or even leave time to have conversations about what that would be like because we are rapidly moving. Because we are rapidly moving towards that May fifteenth deadline. So I know that that may not be a question to answer, but I do want to identify the challenging spot that that puts the board in. And I'm not sure if my colleagues would like to speak on that or agree to that. But it is, it's kind of a difficult spot to put us in.
Director Baber.
Yes, I definitely want to to weigh in because, again, we're, we have not heard from the Parent Advisory Committee because there is no final plan, right? So we don't know what other priorities. They may or may shift that won't require us to use this reserve. And we don't know what other priorities you all may identify as you finalize the LCAP, LCAP plan. And as we do other shifts in our budget. And so I think as long as we're still at the point where we're just giving notices, why are we at the point where we have to move our reserve fund? Because even if we give the notices in the next action, if the plan is finalized, we can then still move the the funds. So it's, we, we actually do have time to do better due process, I think, with the Parent Advisory Committee, with the D-LAC Committee, with the LCAP Plan before we tap our reserves.
Director Shnaski, did you have a question?
No, I, I mean, I agree that it limits our ability to sort of shift things around. I I agree with your comment, but I don't know that I, I don't have a particular question. I, yeah.
All right, colleagues, this is agendaized as an action item. Do we have a motion?
Are we willing to table this until we have a final LCAP plan? And and live with that we're giving notices that can be rescinded?
Or if you could, before we move to a vote, if you could maybe speak to the impacts and do it to doing that?
So we are required by ed code to provide the final notices by May fifteenth, actually midnight on May fourteenth. And we can still rescind them. It's just going to be a negative interaction with both our labor unions as well as our, the employees who are impacted by this, who will receive these layoff notices confirming that they don't have a job. We also put ourselves at risk of these people deciding to go find other jobs and not having the well, highly qualified people who actually know Berkeley and have worked for us for years in some cases, still being our employees.
Director Shnaski.
I I will say, while I do think that this could have been done in a different way, and I I have similar concerns and I appreciate those being raised. I I do not feel comfortable responding by giving layoffs to people and, you know, putting individuals' livelihoods and futures in question as well as the really meaningful work that is done that we just heard is integrated throughout so many of the plans that we have in the district that we have said are vital. So I want to be clear that while I think it could have done, been done better, I'm, I am not interested in tabling the this. And, you know, I I feel ready to vote.
Oh, one second, team. I know we have more discussion, but I'm going to call for a motion to extend the meeting now. It's pretty late, so.
I move that we extend the meeting to eleven thirty, knowing that we can in earlier if possible, if we need to.
Thank you, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Great, seconded by Director Chang, all directors in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, so now it's eleven thirty. And then Director Baber, I know you had a comment right after Director Shnaski.
Uh, yes, and and I don't think any of us disagree with you, Director Shnaski, that we do want to find ways, but I do think it is, it is putting the cart before the horse to not have the LCAP plan finalized. It is, we would not do this to the PNO Committee, in my opinion. They would have had ample time to weigh in, to give us decisions, to give us their advice and their advisory. And I think we are all saying that we, we as a board have a commitment. But we don't want to interrupt process because this is really a legal requirement of notices. This is not our intent or our heart. And so I think that we should do the due diligence work that and and we should extend the PAC the grace that we would suspend, send, extend, thank you, to those who don't serve or underserved communities. Like their primary focus is to give of their time, to give us recommendations and advice on spending for our most underserved students. We struggle to get them in these rooms. And then we're not going to have them weigh in before we take their reserves? I'm just saying, the ripple effects to me are serious. And it's going to reinforce year after year what parents say, there's no reason for me to be on this committee at all. I just gave all my time and you didn't even have enough respect to tell me you're going to take the reserve and use it however you blankly want to use it before you even actually look at the actions in the service. And again, I don't see, I'm still not convinced that this is in line with our policy. I I I do not, I appreciate your answer, but I still don't see that we are not violating our own policy as well.
Yeah, and I just want to respond to the fact that we, we definitely respect the partnership that we have with both PAC and D-LAC. We did pretty extensive stakeholder engagement in the context of the in-person and virtual sessions. And we've spent a lot of time analyzing additional stakeholder feedback that we received in the survey. And we are looking at the PAC report and we're looking forward to hearing from the D-LAC. There's actually some alignment with the direction. Now, remember, the PAC makes recommendations, our responsibility is to respond to them formally. Some of those recommendations were, we will, you know, we are definitely considering. And some of the recommendations might not, might, might be a, not right now, but we can tag them for future. So I just, I, I don't want the the image to be that we are disregarding the very impact in the work that the PAC team has done.
But they haven't weighed in on this. They have had no conversation about this reserve and what it's going to be used for.
Well, this is true because my understanding was that this reserve was general fund. So that's why we went through the S, we went through the S-BAC. And the S-BAC took another vote tonight. So I am remiss in not having said that in my talking point, so I apologize. I'm trying to remember multiple talking points. And so it was all to utilize the LCFF Reserve as a one-time measure. I think all the participants except for one voted yes and the, and the PAC members abstained.
Director Baber.
I was there and I clarified specifically. Are you saying you're okay with us using the reserve? They said yes. Most people did not say that they wanted to circumvent the rest of the process to not have the LCAP plan or the Parent Advisory Committee weigh in. But do they want to use part of the reserve to solve our financial crisis? That was a solid yes. So that's two different things. That's not saying they were like, yes, use it for and circumvent the Parent Advisory Committee or the whole LCAP plan in the process.
I understand.
Thanks.
All right, directors, looking around, see if there's further discussion. If not, this is agendaized as an action item. Wanted to know if there was a motion, Director Shnaski.
I move to approve.
I'll second. Ms. Charles, can you call the vote?
Director Lau.
Oh. It's on the first. Oh, there you go. I'll abstain.
Noted, Director Babet?
No.
No? Director Chang?
Aye, yes.
Director Shnaski?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
No.
President Vasilev?
Yes.
Motion carries on a three to two to one. Thank you very much. And thank you, Associate Superintendent Hogan-Dyke for your presentation and for the thorough discussion, colleagues. Now, we will move on to our next agenda item, fourteen point two. Ms. Tobias Espinoza, will you be introducing this item?
Apologies if I'm out of order, directors. I just want to clarify the vote that just took place. What staff was bringing to you for action was a motion to move five hundred thousand, up to five hundred thousand dollars from the LCFF Reserve. The the how and the what it would be used for was not specified in the presentation. And so you do have the liberty, PAC does have the liberty to have input of how that money would be used. I just wanted to clarify because I think because the action that was coming next, maybe there was some conflation, but it was and is possible for the board to have approved the possible use of that reserve without making any, giving any clear direction around what to use it for. So I don't know if that's a point of clarification that will help, but I think it's important, particularly as we go to this next item. And I think there was some connections that made sense to be made, but doesn't necessarily have to be true.
And that was Vice President Brown asking if he could restate that again, Superintendent?
The whole thing? And no, just restating for the public because I don't want anyone to walk out of here thinking that the vote that some of us on the board made was not in supportive staff or not in supportive staff positions. It was, the vote that we took tonight was about moving the funds from the LCAP Reserve to be able, to be able to use it. So I don't want anybody to walk out of here with a false narrative. So thank you for the opportunity to say that again.
Right? Okay, so we have a resolution to eliminate and reduce classified positions, unfortunately. And this would be for us to do our final notices by the end of the day on May fourteenth. Liz, do you have the presentation? All right, in the interest of time, I'm going to skip over the mission. But we definitely do root ourselves in the mission. So we have been able to rescind things off of the list that you originally approved for the initial potential layoffs in, on March eighth. So we have been able to remove the BHS B-SUP site discretionary positions because the SSC at BHS did vote to confirm the funding. We've also been able to remove a number of PTA positions because either the PTA or Prop twenty-eight funding was confirmed. We have also have confirmed some funding to remove some LCAP positions from the list as well as some cooking and gardening positions. I want to remind everybody that this is a required process by ed code and that if we don't do these notices by May fourteenth, otherwise these positions are considered continuing for twenty-four, twenty-five, and the district would need to figure out how we are going to fund them. We can still rescind after this notice is given. But these will be notices that do say that they are final notifications. So first group in line with the conversation you were just having is LCAP-funded positions. So on March eighth, on the red side of the slide, you will see what was on the list at that point, which included the OFE supervisor, the OFE specialist, six point nine four FTE. The positions at Berkeley High School, which included two restorative justice coordinators as well as the, one of the student and welfare attendance staff members. We may first list, this is version A, includes OFE specialists, four point nine four FTE. For the PTA-funded positions, again, these are positions that the PTA has been committing to pay for over this last year, and we've asked them to recommit for this next year. The list you had on March eighth, the notices covered over eleven school sites. It represented five point one seven FTE. And that was spread over seventeen positions, including instructional assistants, both bilingual and not. Clerical two position, some instructional specialists and one instructional technician. And all of these positions, as a reminder, are created above the baseline staffing of a site. The May first list, we've been able to reduce it, so now it only covers six school sites and only represents two point five three FTE or nine positions. And we are hoping that we will continue to rescind these as we get commitments from the PTA or plans to use the Prop twenty-eight funds. For cooking and gardening positions, on May, March eighth, on that list, the positions covered seventeen school sites. Included instructional specialists, nine point one two FTE, instructional technicians, one two two FTE, and the supervisor one point O. The current list, May first list, is still spread over those seventeen school sites. We have not identified which school sites would be impacted. But we would need to still lay off one point seven three FTE of instructional specialists. We are waiting to hear about a possible grant that we are hopefully going to hear about next week, which would allow us to rescind these layoffs. There are a couple of categories which no changes have been made to the list between March eighth and now. And those include a purchasing position, the storekeeper point two FTE that was mentioned in the Indian comments earlier tonight, as well as the at BHS, the high school plant operations manager. The only positions on this list that are actually unrestricted general fund are are positions that are based on enrollment. So these are positions where we have a formula that we use the enrollment of our students and how many students at which site to determine how much staffing for school campus aides as well as school service assistance. And this, again, no changes made between March eighth and now. So it would be a reduction of one point five one FTE spread over six elementary sites for school campus aides. And two point two two FTE spread over six elementary sites for the school service assistants. This chart, that is very hard to read because I, it's tiny. The last two columns show what FTE we are planning on allocating for next school year based on the enrollment formula for school campus aides and for school service assistants. And the sort of cutoff for the formula is three ninety-nine and below is one rate. One set of FTE, four hundred to five, four hundred ninety-nine is another level. And then five hundred and above is a different level. We have two elementary sites that qualify for the four hundred level. And then we have one elementary site that has a slightly different model because of the, how their plant is set out, how their facility is set up in terms of supervision. So they have a tiny increase in their school campus aides. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you so much. We have Vice President Brown, questions?
Uh, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Tobias Espinoza. I wanted to ask about the cooking and gardening program and the potential layoff notices that are, along with that. Earlier, it was mentioned by BCC E and Vice President Mildred that the cooking and gardening program have their, their own budget. Could you respond to that? Could you inform the board?
So there's, there's two different programs that sometimes get, I think there was a little confusion. So Nutrition Services has.
I'm sorry, Nutrition Services.
Yeah, Nutrition Services has their own budget. Cooking and gardening is funded, I think there's four different budgets that are covering cooking and gardening. It's mostly grants, the sort of tax from the City of Berkeley, strong workforce grant from the City of Berkeley and some other money. One of the things that you previously approved during the six point nine budget balancing solutions was a move to fund instead of from general fund, but from nutrition services, some of the positions in cooking and gardening. And that still remains true. That's why we've been able to reduce. and that still remains true. That's why we've been able to reduce the amount that we are looking at. Is that funding as well as carry, use of carryover funds and looking for an additional grant?
And there isn't enough money, or we don't want to tap into the nutrition budget again to cover the other recommended?
So actually, the Nutrition Services was, was not brought with the six point nine because Sback voted to have more discussion.
Oh.
So it wasn't formally approved, but it was something that staff had brought to Sback and we had discussed. We have since changed that amount. Instead of it being a three hundred thousand dollar bu- back, budget balancing solution, it's now two hundred because we, we were gonna fund a hundred thousand for the, the cooking and gardening program. It was, it was three hundred and now it's two hundred.
Oh, your mic is not.
Would be, that would go to the, to the cooking and gar-, we're proposing to fund them, a hundred thousand plus any unspent funds from this year. That's the proposed general fund, funding for nutri-, for cooking and gardening.
You're welcome. Director Shunovsky?
Yeah, I, I have a number of concerns about the list of positions that are on this list. You know, I look at these and it's, you know, instructional assistant, school campus aide, instructional assistant bilingual, and I feel like these are positions and people that have very direct relationships with students and impacts with students. And so when we talk about cutting positions, we always say that we want to cut as far away from student experience as possible, and I feel like this is not in alignment with that. And I know that there, we've discussed particular revenue sources and the elimination of particular revenue sources and that that's why some of these positions are on the list as they are. But I feel like we need to do a better job, or maybe I need to do a better job of understanding why it is that we are using that as the rationale for eliminating these very student-facing positions, right? There are possibilities, just because one, you know, pot of money is gone, that doesn't mean that we necessarily eliminate that particular position. And we talk about organizational clarity a lot, and I feel like this is, this doesn't feel aligned with that organizational clarity to me. That's one thing. The other thing is, I'm, I'm concerned about our reliance on outside consultants, you know, and, and at the same time, the elimination of people that we know are in our community and of our community and, you know, potentially can be here for a long time.
So in terms of the positions that you mentioned, the funding is different for the school campus aide versus the instructional assistant bilingual. The instructional assistant bilingual positions are created by the PTA and funded by the PTA and are considered positions that basically every year have to be renewed because of that outside funding, which the district does not have the complete control over the, the PTA funding. That being said, it has been a practice for years of doing the PTA layoffs, unfortunately, and trying to rescind them so that we don't have to do final notices. The change in the ed code regarding classified layoffs that made this May fourteenth deadline has greatly impacted that. It used to be a simple sixty-day timeline that could happen at any time during the year, where we could wait until we had gotten through this budgeting process before we had to do the layoff notices for classified, and we can't do that any longer. So that does have an impact on this process. In regards to the student-facing positions, yes, unfortunately, some of these positions are student-facing, and it was not used as a determining factor in this case. It was based on funding. And so that's how we identified the positions that needed to go on the layoff list had to do with funding. And I think that this has been a learning experience and something that we will continue to look at and improve in the future.
I just want to chime in specifically around, there's no, the slide that's on my screen is the PTA funded positions, but specifically thinking about those. And just to your point, Director Shunovsky, one of our core values for resource allocation is sustainability. And what we know is that it is not best practice for PTAs to fund positions that are necessary needed. And we know the people who are at our sites are amazing and do great things for our students. Unfortunately, that this time is a time that we are not just having to think about and restructure what we ask PTAs to put fund, or we've been allowed PTAs to fund, but we're also doing it against the backdrop of a seven point one million dollar cut that might actually be growing. I'm sorry, seven point one million dollar budget balancing that might actually be growing because we have not incorporated yet new or required expenses, right? And so I just want to name that, you know, this is a very hard and unusual time and something that's really new for Berkeley. We have very generous community members and have typically had a rather, you know, not overflowing, but a pretty healthy budget. And so I just wanted to name that, that we know that even beyond this season of budget balancing strategies, there's a larger conversation that is around organizational clarity that speaks to what is the base funding? We'll make sure that all of our, what are the best base positions and supports and services that all schools have? And then what's the role in PTA? And right now, we know is kind of what's reflected here is that PTAs get to pick and decide. Our hope, though, with this particular side of PTA funded positions, I think Associate Superintendent Espinoza said, is that we are still waiting. PTAs are still coming in, confirming their funds and submitting their funds. And so our hope is that, at least, at the very least, this particular list will change as they are still positions that our school sites think are important and want.
Director Babbitt?
Thank you for making that added clarity, Superintendent. I just want to say that slide around the twenty-three campus aide, I'm looking at two hundred and fifty-one students have twenty-three, all the way to four hundred and four still have twenty-three.
I think you're looking at the wrong column.
Okay.
It's the last two columns. Liz, can you put the last slide?
Last slide. You better ask because I'm.
Change the policy. It's a hundred and fifty-three kid difference. So it's the last two slide, columns there. The first three, the first column that has numbers in it, not the location number, but the enrollment is the enrollment, and then the per pupil allocation, that's a separate financial thing that has nothing to do with layoffs or positions. And then that's the actual allocation next to it. And then we're looking at the school campus aide and the school service assistant. The last two columns are the staffing pieces.
Okay, so where I see one point oh seven full-time campus aide for Oxford?
It's actually probably about five people working small, tiny FTEs. So the majority of our school campus aides work about a point two or a point two five FTE.
And then I see one point three three for Berkeley Arts Magnet.
Yes, that's because they have over four hundred students.
That, that's doesn't very, still feels like Berkeley Arts Magnet would need more. This was my overall assessment of that variance, but I just wanted to clarify. Thank you. May I ask for some clarification around the one point three three for Rosa Parks that has three hundred and seventy-one under four hundred?
It's because of their physical plant. They have additional supervision needs that our other sites do not. Washington is another one that has additional needs, but they have actually a school safety officer who serves as their crossing guard protector during the day of that little area of street that they cross.
Hi, team. I just want to be mindful of the time. It's eleven twenty-one. We have nine more minutes left in the meeting, and this is an action item. So I don't know if there are additional questions before we call for a motion. All right, team, I'm gonna call for a motion.
Just want to make sure I understand here. It's, it's action to approve the recisions?
The action that we're recommending is approval of version A of the resolution, which are the positions that still need to receive final notices if the board wishes. That's what we're asking for.
Are, are you sure? Because the slide had version B.
Version A is the one that includes the four point nine four LCAP positions, the OFE specialists.
Can, can we just pull up the slide?
Okay, my apologies. I thought that was version B. No.
Okay. So now that we've obviously passed the LCAP action item, we're now on A. So I move to approve.
Version A?
Version A.
I don't have it linked in the presentation.
I think we have another question.
Director Shunovsky?
Version A has the larger number of, yes, layoffs.
Yes. So the difference is we didn't want to pressure the board into making a decision based on the last item that specifically it was going towards those OFE specialist positions. If the board would like to amend and do version B, that doesn't include those positions, the board is welcome to choose that. The staff currently is recommending version A.
I think it's gonna take some time to understand.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I may need to withdraw my initial motion. And then should we have a conversation about looking at A versus B?
Well, we have seven minutes because we've already exceeded the meeting until eleven thirty.
Like confused.
Yes. Yeah, Director Shunovsky?
Tell me if I'm wrong. Version A includes layoff notices, final layoff notices for all of the positions that we're going to have to get layoff notices if we didn't pass the resolution we just passed. Version B, version B removes those positions because of the additional resources that were just approved in the last resolution.
Correct. Superintendent, can you please clarify? Because that's against what you just said.
So what you voted on in the previous vote was to authorize staff to use up to five hundred thousand dollars from the LCFF Reserve. You did not direct staff or vote on the use of those funds. What you're looking at now and voting on is the list, I think you should just not do versions, just this list that includes the four point nine four FTE OFE specialists. The board did not direct staff to use the five hundred thousand dollars reserve towards these LCAP positions. So they are listed on here until and if funding from LCAP, I'm sorry, until and if the LCAP plan is approved and approves those positions. And in that case, then the five hundred thousand or funds can be used for those positions. But for now, that five hundred is pending LCAP plan finalization.
Thanks for that clarity, Superintendent. Again, Director Shunovsky, another question?
Then why do we have a version B?
You had a version B because the original conversation was to use the five hundred thousand dollar reserve for these positions. However, to the point made by some of the directors here, one, the LCAP is not finalized, and two, PNO and D-LAC need to weigh in and might have different opinions or ideas or input as to how they would like monies to be spent or what positions they would like to continue in the upcoming LCAP. And so to respect their advisory capacity, we are doing that. We're going to be able to tap into the reserve if needed, but we're not going to make any designations to how those funds will be used tonight.
And.
Yes, Director.
We're hitting up on eleven thirty. But so again, does it confirm, based upon what the superintendent just described to allow for that flexibility, the district is recommending version A?
Correct.
Hey, colleagues, is there a motion to approve version A?
I move to approve version A.
Sir, second? I'll second. Second, and by Director Babbitt. Ms. Chiaris, can you call the further?
Director Shunovsky?
No.
Director Lau?
No.
Director Babbitt?
Yes.
Director Chang?
Yes.
Vice President Brown?
Yes.
President Vasilev?
No.
So motion does not carry on a three to two vote. Excuse me, that was three no's and two yeses, right? Can you, excuse me, can you re- re-say the votes? Yes, I have not re-asked for the votes, but can you read out the votes?
Sure.
Of each director before calling the, if it.
Director Chang and Director Babbitt? Yes. With Director Shunovsky and Director Lau and Vice President, I mean, President Vasilev with a no? Yeah. So the motion does not pass on a three to two. Three, opposition and two in favor.
Three and three.
You're supposed to say the motion pass.
Yeah, the, the motion did pass. She's just asking for clarification.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay, no worries. So there were three yeses and two no's. Okay. Great. All right. Well, thank you. That concludes all of the agenda items for today's meeting. Please, colleagues, note the informational items fifteen point one to fifteen point seven. We'll look to see if we have any online public comments. I do not see any online public comments. I don't know if there's a public comment in the audience? No. Thank you. And now we'll move on to extended board member comments, and then we'll close the meeting. Director Shunovsky?
Sorry, I forgot to say something earlier. I just wanted to make the comment that I have asked to appoint Jeanette McNeil to the Peace and Justice Commission as my school board appointee. Ms. McNeil is an educator, thirty-year-long educator in a nearby district, lifelong Berkeley resident, two kids that have gone through BRSD, and I look forward to having her serve us on the commission. Thanks.
Thank you, colleagues. This concludes meeting at eleven twenty-nine PM. Thank you.